Three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, September eighteenth. Thank you for joining us. We are being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV. You can also catch us on livestream on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform. Any disruptions with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. In the event of a disruption, broadcasting will continue on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. We have a full meeting. The Planning Board will be joining us a little bit later. And we are going to start with citizens' participation. If there is anyone online who would like to participate in citizens' participation, go ahead and raise your hand and make yourself known if you'd like to do citizens' participation. If I'm seeing correctly, I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, we have our first, we do have a public hearing at seven fifteen. So unfortunately, we can't go into the joint meeting with the Planning Board, plus we are not at Quorum yet for the Planning Board. So I recommend we go into maybe consent agenda. If I can get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, it passes. Just to let you know, Makita Keegan, our fifth member, is traveling for business. That happens. We all have work that we do. Okay, so that's our consent agenda. Let's go back to...
How about Camp and Alley?
Sure.
Do you need to have a long discussion?
No, I don't think so, to release the remaining from the escrow. Sure, let's go into that. Michael, if you could talk us through that. We're discussing funds to be released from the remaining esc... Well, there's no funds, but just the remaining escrow. Michael, if you could take us through that, please.
Correct. So, you know, this obviously goes back to the Sears apartment development. And so we did retain funds in escrow until we were confident that the things that they needed to do and were part of that development agreement were actually completed. So we feel confident in that. Peter has signed off on it. Becca Solomon, our conservation agent, has signed off on that. And so, yes, we feel now it's appropriate to do this. If you recall, they actually came to us before to release this.
Right, and we weren't ready because of certain different things, okay? Any questions from the board on this? No? Okay. If I could have a motion then to release the remaining escrow balance outlined in the Ashland Rail Transit District Camp and Alley Thorne-Dorndike Sears Development Agreement in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three and four cents.
So moved.
Second. Okay, and any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye, that's four zero as well. Thank you for that, Michael.
Can you go into like some of the town manager updates?
Um, we'll go, let's go through some reminders.
Sure.
I think so. So a couple of reminders. The next Select Board meeting will be on Wednesday, October sixteenth. We are not meeting on the second because it is a Jewish holiday. So out of respect of that, we are not having a meeting that night. So put that on your calendars. Wednesday, October sixteenth is our next meeting. And then we will also be meeting in the thirtieth of October. Ashland Day will be taking place on Saturday, September twenty-first, from nine to four. Joe, you want to talk to us a little bit about Ashland Day while we wait?
Sure, real quick, hopefully the rain holds up or goes south. That would be better. But we have the tradition of Community Pride Day coming up. And there are many food vendors from town, a couple of new vendors that we have, which is a variety of food people, from Thai food to Mexican food to Italian food, of course, which is pizza. And it's just, it's just, it's a lot bigger. And then we have, you know, traditional snow cones and popcorn and stuff from the, from the high school kids that use this as a great jumpstart for their fundraising venues for the beginning of their, for their year. So we hope everybody shows up. We had a few craft vendors leave, leave us unfortunately. Some due to personal reasons and some double booked their own, their own events. So needless to say, so we're down to ninety, ninety-five vendors, which is fine. And we're shading it up a little bit. So we're expanding the field a little bit, so you're not on top of one another. And that should make things a lot easier for everybody. And we have, you know, our annual committee members from, from, from the town, all the, all board members who have, you know, want to be out there, they're there. Comprehensive plan will be there, which is great. Police and fire will have their displays showing up as well. And Ashland Town Forest Committee. But I can't tell you who the Citizen of the Year is and our Grand Marshal, because that's a surprise until that day. So just be there and show up.
So come hungry, come with some money to spend, and come for a great day of community.
Yeah, that's it, exactly. Community and reunion, and reunion, it's a time to, you know...
So Joe, real quick, it mentions opening a time capsule. Can you tell us a little bit about that, so people can be there and excited?
There's a, at the corner of Main and Union, if you look to the left, there's a brick building. And that used to be the old New England Telephone Building. And there's a cornerstone, and this is nineteen sixty-three on it. Well, lo and behold, there is a time capsule that was behind that cornerstone. So they went on the inside of the building, they got permission to open up that, that wall and dig out the, the corner, the, the time capsule. So that time capsule will be opened after the presentation of the Citizen of the Year and Grand Marshal. So it's from nineteen sixty-three, so that ought to be very interesting. You know, what, what, what happened, you know, in sixty-three? A lot of things have happened, you know, so, you know, from JFK's assassination to the Beatles coming around. So who knows, maybe there's a forty-five in there. I'm hoping there's a couple of baseball cards in there that... That'll be in mint condition.
That we can sell and fundraise for Ashland Day.
That, that's it, exactly. It'd be nice to see a Mickey Mantle or something like that, you know, but I doubt it. I highly doubt it.
Great.
But yeah, we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a lot of fun. And there'll be some surprises out in the thing. I don't want to tell everybody what's going on.
Yeah, just show up and have some fun.
Show up, they have a lot of fun, absolutely.
Good. Okay, we still have a few minutes until our hearing at seven fifteen. A reminder, our Fall BAA Grant Round and Select Board Community Grant Round is now open. Submissions are due by September thirtieth, so Monday, September thirtieth. And if you have questions, you can go to the town's website, ashlandmass.com. And you can find more information there.
Just real quick, just about that. So when the, the, when we close out the submission cycle, Claudia and I will meet as part of the subcommittee to do the, to do the grant reviews. And then can we plan to put that on our next agenda for October?
Or how do we want, do you want to do it? Do you think you'll be ready for the sixteenth, or do you want to push it until the thirtieth?
What would you like to do?
You tell me.
I don't know, I think we can do it for the sixteenth.
Okay, I think so too.
So if we can do it for the sixteenth, then Susan, if you could take note to add that to the sixteenth agenda, that'd be great. Okay?
Awesome.
You guys are going to work quick, appreciate that. Okay, a couple of other reminders before we hit our seven fifteen hearing time. Electronics recycling, oil, mercury, and oil-based paint drop-off will be on Saturday, October fifth. So in two and a half weeks, and from nine to noon at the DPW off of Ponderosa Road. A reminder, textile clothing recycling pickup must be scheduled with Simple Recycling and at simplerecycling.com. Another thing that I have found out is if you have Black Earth composting, you can buy tickets from them, stickers, and you can give them textiles in a white trash bag if you've purchased a sticker. And then you can put it out with your compost. So if you're a Black Earth customer, you can do that, and it's another way to recycle. Uh, let's see, yard waste collection begins on Mondays on October seventh and will continue on Mondays through November twenty-fifth. And that is grass leaves, no big sticks or anything like that. And it has to be put into those brown bags. Uh, we are looking for individuals interested in running the twenty-twenty-five Boston Marathon. Anyone interested should complete the form on the town's website. Submissions are due by October fifteenth, and the names will be drawn at random. Uh, it's nice that we have a few extra numbers. And just a note on that, I had a conversation with another organization that has marathon numbers. And it's probably too late for this round, but our next round, I think we should look at increasing the fundraising though. But that's a discussion for another time, just something to think about. Okay, where are we at?
No, when I read that, I thought, in running the twenty-five Boston, twenty-twenty-five Boston Marathon, so I'm saying, what, the marathon crew just up and left and we have to find people to run it?
Oh, to run. Well, fortunately, that's not what we made.
I know.
No, 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 so this is for bib numbers, yeah, okay. Okay, so it is seven fourteen. I'm going to start reading the legal notice, and I'm sure by I'm done, time I'm done, it'll be seven fifteen. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a hearing in accordance with Mass General Law one thirty-eight, section nineteen H, for an alteration of premise. This alteration allows on-premise consumption of any alcoholic beverages produced by the licensee understand section nineteen B and nineteen C and sold under the licensee's brand name, Ashland Brewing LLC, DBA Clover Road, Ashland, one fifty-one Main Street, Ashland, Mass. oh one seven two one. A public hearing will be held on the matter, on this matter. Persons wishing, Wednesday, September eighteenth at seven fifteen PM. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the public hearing in person or by logging into the Zoom meeting. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the Select Board's office, Town Hall one oh one Main Street, Ashland, Mass. oh one seven two one, or by emailing susanroby@aslanmass.com. Signed by myself, Yolanda Greaves, Chair of the Select Board. So I'm sure you all remember, we were here at our last meeting to approve the two separate licenses, and now we're combining them. And I believe we have someone here from Clover Road, yes?
Yes, hi, Jamie Muldoon.
Hi, Jamie, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, please do.
Um, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Public hearing is now open. Uh, so Jamie, I don't really, Susan, can you take us through this one? And then we'll go from there, and then we'll hear from Jamie as well.
Sure. Ultimately, what this is, is this is an alteration. You, you approved the pouring licenses for both the malt beverages and the wine at the last meeting. But they cannot pour the product simultaneously unless you accept this chapter of the law.
Okay, Jamie, anything to add?
Um, no, we're just really excited to be able to serve both beer and wine in Ashland very soon.
Simultaneously.
Yeah, you go.
The same place.
Who knew, who knew that was a thing?
Wow.
Any other questions? Is there anyone?
Is it, I just have a question with respect to the legal notice, um, which is alcoholic beverages. I don't want people to be confused that it's liquor. And not, and not malt and wine.
Beer and wine.
And I'm just wondering, does that, should that have been malt and wine instead of alcoholic beverages?
Susan?
Joe, I took that right from the section of the law.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that it, it, it doesn't become a stumbling block down the road. That's all.
Susan, you've been working with the ABCC pretty closely on this. And I think, I think, you know, Susan's been running things by and stuff.
Just wanted to just check on it, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good with it, that's fine.
No other discussion? Okay, let's see, anyone to speak against? We've heard from staff. Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. And then if I could have a motion to amend the alteration of premise as presented, which allows the consumption of any beverage produced by the licensee and sold under the licensee's brand name.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, very, Jamie, you are all set. Thanks for being here again. And do we, do we have a date yet?
Not yet, but we're getting closer very, very soon.
It's been nice to see the progress on the outside, so.
Yeah, people are excited, they're talking about it.
People are waiting.
We're excited too. Good luck with the last, the last little, little bit before you open.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it all.
Okay, good luck, and we'll hopefully see you in person soon at the brewery.
Yes, you're all invited.
Thank you.
Bye, bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, didn't take as long, but that's okay. We have our Planning Board here. Hello, everybody. We have Tricia online. Uh, so the Select Board has already called itself to motion into, into session. So if you guys want to do the same.
Um, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I will call the Planning Board. I will open the Planning Board meeting at six eighteen.
Seven eighteen, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry, Midwest time, seven eighteen.
Say that at the end of the night?
Yeah.
We, we typically don't do a vote to open our meeting, so.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
Thank you.
So we are here to hear, we have two items on our agenda as a joint boards, is the presentation by Jim Goldson and then discussion of MBTA. So Jen, I'm going to pass it off to you, and then we'll go from there.
All right, very good, thank you. I'm so happy to be here. Thank you for, I'm glad you had several things of business to do together so that you're making good use of your time together. Jen Goldson, Planning Consultant, leading the comprehensive plan for the consultant team. And I'm here to basically tell you how much the committee has accomplished in the first two phases. At the end of each phase, there are four phases, which I might as well switch to that slide. There are four phases in the plan, and we are basically right in between the end of phase two and the launch of phase three. So at the end of each phase, what we like to do is come to both of your boards and just tell you how things are going and where we are and what to expect next. So that's what we're doing now. So you may remember from a few months ago, when we had the whole consultant team here, that we presented the existing conditions profile. And that was the end of phase one, which was called Ashland yesterday and today. And it's really just trying to understand where you are now. And then phase two was really about where does the community want to go? So there was a really big push for community engagement. I'm going to talk more about it, but it was very impressive what the Comprehensive Plan Committee, many of you are on, were, was able to do in that, in that big push. And of course, there's engagement throughout, certainly not done. But, but that was the big push in phase two. And trying to understand, what is the big vision people have for the future of Ashland? Where do they want to go? What are the things they really care about? And what do they want to see in a, in a, kind of a big way in this plan? And we're going to start to get into the details of the plan now that we're going to enter phase three. But this is not so much about the details. It's about that big picture of where the community wants to go in the next decade. So the process to create that vision, I can, I tried to do a little count of how many hours the committee worked. Um, you worked at least for eight hours collaboratively writing and then refining the vision statement, the core themes, and the goals. And I'll tell you what each of those pieces are. So that was very impressive. It started with an open house that I think we tag teamed on an event here. I can't remember the name of the event.
Holiday Stroll last December.
Holiday Stroll with that open house. And then January through June, we had several engagement activities. There was the Meeting in a Box, which was that do-it-yourself meeting kit, which I bet all of you hosted something. And maybe folks who are listening to this either participated or also hosted. You had a community survey. And then you also had something, we call it the crowd map, but it's basically an interactive map that was online. People pointed to places they want to see change or improvement or preservation. And then we did work with the committee. And so we created this from that, well, you'll see right up there. We keep track on this thermometer, how many, we call them participation touchpoints because we actually encourage people to participate more than once. You know, if you do a meeting in a box, we'd love for you to also do the crowd map and, and things like that. So we count every touchpoint, and you have over two thousand, seven hundred touchpoints. Um, you're very close to that, you know, very ambitious engagement goal that you set. You're about eighty-eight touchpoints shy, and you still have several months left. So I know that you'll get to that and go way beyond your engagement goal, which is, which is really exciting. We worked over the summer with the committee. So the committee held two visioning sessions that they really worked collaboratively in small groups to basically write the vision and the goals. We asked them, hopefully they were probing questions. We gave them this big summary of all the engagement touchpoints. We call that the aggregated community engagement summary. We abbreviate that as the ACEs Report. And so the committee was tasked with reading that. It was very long, lots of appendices. And then doing a questionnaire that was kind of guiding them through answering the questionnaire. They were writing their own vision statement by answering this questionnaire. Then they came together in these community visioning sessions at the, is it called the Senior Center or the Community Center? Okay, at the Community slash Senior Center. And we spent many hours working in those small groups, talking with each other, trying to figure out, you know, what do we want to say in this vision statement? And what kind of goals do we want to put with it? And then we worked for two more committee meetings at the library to really refine that and get to some consensus among the whole Comprehensive Plan Committee. So it was really impressive. People didn't always start at the same place, but I think we ended at a place, and I don't want to say ending so final, doesn't, this isn't final final. This is where we have a good draft that the whole committee has told me there are no deal breakers in this draft, and we feel good about releasing this to the public for comments. So there's a survey that's live right now to get comments on this draft that was really created from that two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven touchpoints that people told us about, and then this collaborative work. Does that make sense, the way I described that? Okay, all right, very good. So I'll just go over some fundamentals. I know I say this again and again, but I always think that sometimes people are maybe listening and just patching into the plan or the project and haven't heard me say this again and again. So for those of you who have, I apologize in advance. So why are we even doing this? What is a comprehensive plan? It's really a way for the community to take a step back and try to figure out, what are we even doing here? What do we want to be? Where are we now? Um, you really think big picture, and you also want to make those connections. So there's all sorts of business the Select Board and the Planning Board deals with on a, every other week or however often you meet. And, you know, you put all those pieces together and you'll get a big picture. But mostly what you're thinking about... but mostly what you're thinking about are those individual pieces, you just had a, an action that you were looking at taking in this public hearing, and you do, I don't know, thousands of things like that, um, all the time. So, big picture thinking, making those connections, um, guiding specialized plans, so there probably will be more specialized plans that come from this bigger initiative, and it will help you prioritize, where do you want to focus that planning energy on over the next decade? Leveraging existing assets, so we look at what are your assets now, what kind of funding do you have? What kind of, um, staffing resources do you have, committee resources, volunteer resources? You have all sorts of resources, infrastructure, uh, facilities, and then how do we leverage that with trends that we're seeing in a bigger, kind of bigger region than, not just Ashland? And then we want to look at those community-wide priorities, and that's what we're trying to really suss out in this phase two is, what does the community think are the priorities here? And that's where we are. So just as a reminder, there are, in the statute, the state statute there, that, that, um, asks the planning board basically to prepare a comprehensive plan, or they call it a master plan in the statute, there are seven statutory elements, so this plan will touch all of those elements, but it will also bring in other things that people weren't thinking as much about back when this was written, so we've added in things, you'll see sustainability isn't actually technically in the statute. Sometimes we add other things in, but it really depends on what the community is seeing that they really value, and, and want to add to that. All right, and then we like to really emphasize in our plan that these, in the plans that we work with our communities on, these elements are really interconnected, I think the old-school way of doing a, a master plan or comprehensive plan was to just have a separate, you know, chapter for each element, and even do them separately. So you may have spent four months just on transportation, and then you move on, and you think about open space, but you don't think about them together, and we think that the beauty of doing the comp plan, the comprehensive plan, is you get a chance to actually think about all these things together, because they really affect each other, and they can help each other, or they can hurt each other. All right, and then the things, I'm already starting to use these terms with you, I'll just describe what they mean. So I talked about that existing conditions profile, I like this tree metaphor, I've been using it for a long time. The, the existing conditions is kind of like the trunk of the tree, we're just trying to figure out the trends, the issues, establish a baseline of information, then, and that's what we did in phase one, then we're trying to get the big blurry picture of the whole canopy of the tree. We're trying to figure out, what's the vision here, where are we trying to go? And then we put, um, the conditions on, the conditions are the goals, and those are the branches that hold up that canopy. And then later, in phase three, which we're about to launch, we'll come up with the strategies, which are the leads, like, well, how do you do it? How are you gonna do it, what zoning are you gonna implement? What, uh, funding sources are you going to use? What, um, board and staff capacity are you gonna do, what kind of programs are you gonna have? Kind of capital investments do you need to do? That's coming, that's, we are not quite there yet, but we're about to launch into that. And then as part of that, we'll have something that's called a future land use map, it's not shown on my beautiful tree, I'll have to think of a way to get that map in there, but, but the future land use map is not a zoning map. In other states, it does become a zoning map, but not in Massachusetts. But it basically says, like, if we look at the next ten years, and we try to put our vision onto a map, what does that say about where we want to grow, where we want to preserve, where we want to conserve, and how we want to, you know, look at our corridors and things like that, and our neighborhoods, so that's what the map does. It can turn into zoning changes, but it's not by itself a zoning map. Does that all make sense so far? All right, perfect, so we are here tonight to present the, we've called it the final draft vision, so it's not final-final, nothing's final till it's adopted, but we, we spent a lot of, um, hard work with the, the committee and the community who participated, um, in a, in a very strong way to write this. So, um, I lo, I love this quote by Toni Morrison, uh, the reason we spend so much focus on phase two is because we want the community to get a chance to dream a little before we think, and I know, dreaming, thinking, it's not quite perfect metaphor, but, but the idea here is to think in a, in a, um, in an aspirational way first, before you start to say, can we really afford that? You know, how are we gonna do it? Don't worry about that yet, you'll worry about that next, we'll worry about that in phase three, but we just want you to dream a little first, and that's what this is about. So you'll look at the vision, and you might say, that is ambitious, or you might say, okay, I think we're kind of almost there with some of these things, um, but that's kind of the point of it. So I hope you also have this, I think you got a handout, I do have a couple extra copies if people want them. I stuck them in my bag, but I'm happy to get them if people want the hard copies. This is also online, on the comprehensive plan website, and, um, we have a whole survey up right now about it, so we encourage all of you, and anyone who's listening, any member of the community that wants to weigh in on what they think about this vision statement, this is the first of two paragraphs, we would love for you to take that survey, and it's live now. So I'm not gonna read the whole thing, um, the, the, the vision is two paragraphs, this is the first, but I'm just gonna, um, say some of the key phrases that I think will give you a gist of the things that folks are telling us they really care about. So on this first paragraph, and remember, this is a vision for the future, so this is, project yourself ten years into the fut, ten years from when the plan is done, which will be next year, so, twenty thirty-five, ten years from when this plan is done, this is what the community is thinking they want Ashland to be like. Some of it is like staying the same in some aspects, and other things are maybe improvements over what you're doing. So I'm gonna read some key phrases, um, diverse inclusive community, honors and preserves its small-town charm, rich history, open space, vibrant and sustainable neighborhoods, exceptional schools, aesthetically pleasing public and private spaces, safe walkable bikeable, multimodal transportation options, enhances community connectivity, well-maintained accessible recreation amenities. And I want you to know that we, we spent a lot of time on every single word here, so I'm not skipping over words because I'm not honoring what they're doing, I just wanted to, to give you the highlights. Okay. The second paragraph, so again, project yourself forward to that twenty thirty-five. Ashland is adaptive to changing needs, an emphasis on cultural assets, diverse housing options, town infrastructure, open space, climate change solutions, promotes business opportunities, focuses on affordability and accessibility for people of all ages, community spirit flourishing downtown areas, welcoming gathering spaces, celebration of its diverse population and robust volunteerism. And again, really thinking a lot about what are the words we're using here. All right, and then I want to describe what this means, core themes, this is not something that, um, this is kind of a, particular to the way my firm does comprehensive plans. Because we feel it's so important to think about those connections of those statutory elements, we ask the community and the committee to come up with, what do you think are the themes that we're hearing in the engagement that can translate eventually into chapters for your plan? And it will bring together those different statutory elements in a way that we think promotes the concept of these things are all connected. And so this is very, um, customized for Ashland, because you guys wrote it, not us. So the themes you, you, you are, you know, at least in this draft form, are promoting are, one, building and enhancing community, two, promoting long-term sustainability, three, guiding development that honors open space and conservation, four, enhancing town services and economic development, and five, creating a connected and accessible community. I'm gonna go through these again, because each of these has a set of goals. So the goals, again, are not how you do things, they're what you're trying to do, it's the condition you're aiming for, how do you know you're successful after ten years? So the next set of slides is gonna be a slide for each of those, and again, I've paraphrased here, the goals are fully written out on your handout, um, but just for the sake of not having too many words on the slide, I paraphrase the ki, the, kind of the key point here. So under building and enhancing community, the three goals that the committee identified are, cultivating a thriving community culture, fostering connection between the community and its historical heritage, as well as preserving historic assets, and developing inclusive and vibrant public spaces. So those are all goals, again, doesn't tell you how you're gonna do it, just says what you're trying to do. The next core theme is promoting long-term sustainability, and there are five goals here. And you can just imagine, I should have said this on the first slide, the next phase, when we start to think of strategies, our job in working with the committee is to think of strategies, sets of strategies for every goal. So this, we're sort of starting from the framework, and we're building it out. And so you'll see the next presentation I give you, when phase three is close to being done, we'll have strategies for every single goal of how you can get there. So we have carbon-neutral practices, triple net zero energy-water-waste by twenty forty, and we try to carry on other goals that are already established in the community, like the twenty forty goal. Tree preservation and planting, walkable bikeable, micro-mobility-friendly neighborhoods, approach zero waste, and preserve water supply quality and usability. So these are all under sustainability, long-term sustainability. The next core theme is guiding development that honors open space and conservation, and so these goals, there are five. One is protecting open space properties, and we want to, you know, refer to, uh, the open space and recreation plan, whatever is the most current, um, during that ten-year period, to identify those priority areas. Strive to have publicly accessible and inclusive green spaces within half a mile of every residence in all Ashland neighborhoods. Some of these goals you'll see have a metric, it has a way that you can actually measure success, and that's an example of one. Offer a variety of housing options, including affordable housing opportunities. New development in strategic locations, and the goal, you'll see when, you know, the full goal writes out, well, what do we mean by that? Establish adaptable spaces that seamlessly transition to accommodate a wide range of community needs and uses. So I think the emphasis here is on adaptable spaces, things that can have many functions. And then we have, um, oops, enhancing town services and economic development, so we have four goals. Vibrant and economically thriving downtown, public facilities to meet the needs of a growing and diverse population, improve public water sewer and high-speed inf, um, internet infrastructure, and water recreation to safely swim and boat. And then, I think this is the last one, yes, create a connected and accessible community, there are five goals. Connectivity of community open spaces to, to neighboring towns, transportation safety and accessibility, affordable and convenient regional and local public transit options, townwide corridor revitalization efforts, including multimodal roadway improvements, and connections from the Pond Street corridor to surrounding neighborhoods and key destinations, specifically Ashland's surrounding neighborhoods. So you lost a little bit, because I didn't read the whole thing, but hopefully you're getting the gist of it, and we'll go back and read the full, the full thing. All right. So I want to get into just what's gonna happen next, and I'm happy, I don't know if time allows, but I'm happy to take questions or comments or anything you'd like, um, but I'll just finish this, if that's okay?
I think that makes sense.
Okay. All right, so launching phase three, so we're about to do this, so, um, I love quotes. So, "The essence of strategy is choosing what not to do, strategy is about making choices." So that gives a good, uh, kind of a good framework to what, to what we're about to do. We're about to meet with our whole consultant team, and Michael and Peter are gonna help as well, and we're just gonna brainstorm as many strategies as we can think of that could help with those goals and that vision. We're gonna kind of comb through our best practices, think of cases that are, case studies, I should say, that are similar to things done, or could be done in Ashland, and we're gonna have a session, um, coming up, I think it's next week, where we're just gonna sit down in my office and do a big brainstorm. And the idea here is, is to think of as many things, so we're gonna start with the long list. And then we're gonna ask the community, certainly add to it if you think we've missed something, but the idea of phase three is to narrow that list down, to start to make those choices, to think about where do we want to prioritize our investments and our time and our energy. So that is how we've designed phase three. So when I talk about strategies, I gave some examples before, I said they could be zoning, you talk about MBTA zoning right after this, it could be physical design, it could be something to do with other roadway improvements, or, or other capital investments, it could be capacity building, and what I mean by that is people, for the most part, but it can also mean other funding sources, or it could even mean different boards or committees than you have now. So who's doing what, um, how do you do it, where does the money come from, that's what I mean by capacity. Sometimes it's about saying, well, you probably need to have this kind of position in your community if you want to make this other thing happen, so you'll see recommendations like that. And then we have, uh, regulatory policies, usually zoning, but it can also be other regulations that the town has control over. And then programmatic means some kind of program that you might have. Sometimes people want to do like a homebuyer program, or something like that, that's local, could be lots of examples of programs that you have. So those are the four kinds of strategies, and you'll see that we try to identify those throughout the process, so we have a nice mix of those that we're thinking of. And then I said, we're really gonna narrow down, so I like this little filter, so we're gonna put lots of strategy ideas in the top, and then through tech, what, something we call technical working sessions, um, a community survey and department manager working session, and then work with the committee, of course. We're gonna be narrowing down and creating that strategy shortlist. Let me describe each of those, um, tools, so these are more engagement tools. So the technical working sessions, we're, um, trying to identify with the committee's help, uh, different town officials, could be town staff, could be people who serve on boards and committees, could be, uh, members of the community who have a special interest, or personal expertise, or some professional tie. We want to get people that, um, are really going to feel, um, very engaged in talking at a very technical level. We're gonna be talking about things that are, um, technical, I don't know how else to say, I don't want to keep saying the same word, but they're technical things, um, so that will happen, and they'll be, we'll have capacity to have, um, at least a hundred experts of your community coming to these, so there'll be one technical working session for each core theme, and we say that you can invite, you can invite more than this, but we basically have capacity to do about twenty people each session. And then we have the community survey, which will be, we'll take down the visioning survey first, because we don't want people to be confused by, which survey am I supposed to take? So we'll get that, we'll leave that up for, you know, several weeks, and then when we're ready, we'll put that survey up for the strategies. Typically how we do it, because there are a lot of strategy ideas, as you see from this little diagram, we typically do a survey for each core theme, so that if somebody's really mostly interested in one topic, or two topics, they don't need to feel like they have to go through the whole survey, they can just focus in. If they want to go through all five of them, perfectly fine. And then we have the department managers' working session, we tend to have this a little bit later in phase three, because we want to have, um, once we have a little bit more of a shortlist by working with the technical working session and understanding where the community's coming from, we take a, kind of a medium shortlist to the department managers, and say, tell me about your capacity for implementation, where are the gaps here? Where are some synergies, like where can you work together on things? And we try to understand that better, it doesn't mean you can't do something if you don't have the capacity now, we just want to understand what is that gap, so that we can refine the recommendation for that. And then, um, and then we do work with the committee as well, um, showing them all of these results, and having them really come to some agreement around that shortlist, so that our goal, just as it was with the vision and goal setting, is that the committee will have no deal breakers when we're done. And at the end of this, I'll be presenting that strategy shortlist to you in a few months. So, how do you narrow the list? You know, you could, you could do it many ways, I just gave some examples. You could look at what has the greatest positive impact to the most people, you could look at what's the biggest bang for the buck, what's avail, what is the availability of non-Ashland funding sources? Like are there state or federal sources, or private monies we can tap into? What's the effect on residential property taxes, promoting, you know, which ones promote diversity, equity, inclusion? And this is not, um, inclusive of every idea, just want to give you ideas, like these are some ways you can prioritize. All right, so what you're gonna see next, this is just an example we pulled, this is from Topsfield, which we finished recently, and this, this is a page from their comprehensive plan, so you'll see at the end of the day, the strategies are usually just a sentence or two, the trick is finding the set that you want to prioritize. That's the real work here. Once you get that set, you can basically have them as part of your master plan. And then, um, we also work with the committee as much as we can to identify some more metrics. Some of the metrics I mentioned are embedded in some of the goals, but we also like to see, are there other metrics we can measure success with? Um, and so we do some work with the committee around that as well, and this is just an example. And it's for you to measure over the next ten years, so just because we think of a strategy idea in the year twenty twenty-four, in the year twenty thirty-four, you know, before your, your comp plan is over, that doesn't mean that's the best strategy idea at that moment in time. So the strategies might change over time, but the things you're measuring will help you figure out, are the strategies we're implementing, are they working? will help you figure out, are the strategies we're implementing, are they working or do we need to pivot? So that's why we do that. Does that make sense? Alright. And then this is just an example of a future land use map. It's very, you know, it doesn't really get down to the parcel level. It's more of an artistic representation of what you wanna see for growth and preservation. Um, on this one, they have historic district, they have connectivity improvement for intersections and corridors. They have conservation areas, historic preservation opportunities, evolving opportunities. So this is Topsvi- I think this is Topsfield, um, is it Topsfield?
Yeah, you didn't do this one, huh?
We can do it for you, but you can give us advice. Um, but the idea of it is just to give the b- those big ideas some s- some spatial sense to them. So and you mu- you might have different, we customize this, so you may have different categories. We'll work with you on what you wanna call things. Um, and that's what that looks like. So I think that's it, so I hope I didn't go too long, but I wanted to um, get you all up to speed and I'm happy to take questions if if there's time.
Questions? Anyone who wants to jump in and go first? Comments, thoughts? Claudia Jo, I mean, you guys haven't been as involved as Brandy and I, so.
No, I actually appreciate the the presentation, it provides additional information that um, I was gonna have questions and you answered at least three of the four questions that I had. So are we?
Sure you don't wanna ask that fourth question?
No, you know, it it, no, I'm good right now, I'm good. Right now, I'm overloaded with the information.
Yeah, and and definitely, if you haven't taken the time, I'm sure you probably did read through everything already.
I have.
But go through it again and then if you have other questions. Claudia?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that was a great presentation and uh, I guess when I was looking through some of it, I thought about how much work everybody has done and um, how much I appreciate that, that that uh, uh, it it's just such a massive undertaking, so that is very much appreciated. And um, you know, and I look forward to uh, it it's amazing, I feel as though how what has come out of this is much of what I think we all hear out in the community. So uh, it's it's nice to know that it kind of mirrors what you you think that people want, so thank you.
Good. Anyone on the planning board side, any comments or thoughts?
I did have a question about um, the slide that we just had with the strategies on top and the the next step, I think it's called the which slide was that, the prior slide?
I just have to find it here, here we go. Not used to this computer, okay.
Where we're gonna start with the strategies and they're gonna make their way to the, this one?
Yeah.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, so the last comprehensive plan steering committee meeting um, that we had. Um, and I believe Peter and Michael may not have been there, so I don't know if others who work can confirm my recollection. Um, the discussion was that the consultant's team would bring all the strategies forward to the entire committee to then kind of dwindle it down, pick the ones that are interesting to the committee and then make their way down to the local experts, the department managers, working sessions, et cetera.
I see, let me ex-
Can I just finish my question?
Yes, of course.
And so what I heard today was quite different, which was that there's gonna be a brainstorming session in your office with Michael and Peter that would then trickle down to the committee, which is very different from my recollection. Um, so can you clarify that? What will you be doing in your office? And will you be kind of creating a comprehensive list or actually narrowing it down with Michael and Peter?
Yeah, no, so we're creating a comprehensive list. Um, so we start out with as big of a list as we can think of, knowing that you won't be able to implement all of them. We wanna give you a lot of choices and a kind of a lot of options, so we think of everything we can think of. Um, and then we typically go straight to the technical working session with packets that have and all of the committee members would be coming to those. Usually what happens is the committee decides which members go to which core theme based on, you know, their interest or what they're representing. And then we basically get a exit poll from everybody that participates in the technical working session with how they would rate the ideas and then what other ideas would they add? So it's a way for both, you know, committee members who are participating and all of the other participants to add ideas as well as rate, uh, sorry, rate, I always say rank. I get rank and rate mixed up a lot, so I mean, they'll rate them, not rank them. And um, and then we'll do the same thing at the same time with the community survey so that people will look at everything, they can add ideas if they'd like, but they'll also rate the, at least the areas that they have an interest in. They certainly could rate everything. Um, and then we would go to the department manager with um, what we typically do, we could talk about the timing of the department manager, we've done this two different ways. Um, at the point when you finish the technical working session and the community survey, the committee has then a lot of information with which to base some decisions on. And what we typically do is we give the committee members a questionnaire, and I think this is what you might remember me describing. But maybe I wasn't clear enough about when that happens in the process. So we give the committee members a questionnaire, we give them the results of the technical working session and the community survey. And then we give them all a questionnaire like we've done in the past where they'll each individually say what they think about the results. And then we, and I'll describe that more in a minute, but then we bring them all together and we focus the conversation on the things that people didn't agree on. So let me describe that, I'm gonna back up, so that's kind of the end result. And then we go out, I would recommend actually doing the department managers after that. Um, so that we're just doing that shortlist that the committee has already vetted with the department managers. And then coming back to the committee to then say, and this is what we heard from the department managers on the shortlist that you gave them. So you are creating the shortlist at the committee level, but I wanna provide you with more information than you have right now. And the information you're gonna get is how the, hopefully, hundred folks that come to the technical working sessions. And hopefully, I don't know how many people will take the community survey, but I'm hoping it'll be a nice, robust. Um, you'll have that information. And what we'll provide you in that questionnaire is we'll show you, these are the strategies that between the technical working session responses and the community survey, they got very high marks, like fours and fives means people really like them. Um, these are the set that got really low marks, like ones and twos means people really don't want them, like don't even wanna work on it, they just want it out of the plan. And then these are the ones that are like that, sim- you know, we usually do like fraction, like between 2.5 and up to four or something. And those are the middle ones that we're like, we really need the committee's um, help with these in particular. But what we want you to do is look at the ones that people through this process gave a four and a five. And we were asking you to basically say, do you disagree with any of these things that were ranked consistently high? And typically what happens is committee members are, no, we actually agree, we think the, that that's probably about right. Do you disagree with anything that were ranked really low? Cause we're just suggesting they be completely ruled out. And you get a chance to say, well, I wanna consider this thing and talk to the committee about it because I think people don't understand X, Y, or Z or, and then the committee can vote on whether to raise something out of the, out of the, don't do it. And then the middle piece is where we don't have really clear guidance from the technical working sessions and the community survey. It could be sometimes that the technical working sessions really like something and the community really doesn't like something. And so when we see a score like that, we bring that also back for focused community discussion, like what's going on here? Do you feel like this is something that should stay in or not? And if it should stay in, does it need to be changed or tweaked? And so we think the committee can have a much more informed discussion. If you wait for the results of the technical working session and the community survey, we won't eliminate or promote anything on our own, we just, we're gonna say basically like, if you just go with these results, this is what it's telling us. And then the committee will decide through that, maybe it was a painful process, I know it was very long, but we're gonna do a similar thing. Um, it might take several meetings to get through it all, but we'll do a similar thing where I want there to be no deal breakers and you like the shortlist that we end up with. And then I would suggest, we uh, we ha- we're doing this differently in one community right now and I actually don't like it very much, but our client really wanted it this way. But we, I often recommend do the department manager working session after you do that process. And then the department managers are only looking at the list that the committee is like, I think this is the right shortlist. Tell us what your capacity, you know, is to to implement this. So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear about the order of that, but that's typically how we do it.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Pull the microphone a little closer, so, and I know we have some people online. Um, I just, we're gonna finish here at the table and then I'll get to you, Tricia, cause I know Kate and then Brandy has something as well. So Kate, go ahead.
Um, so I I I have this, no, I think I have it right, you had, you said ask the community about the strategies. And then we're again going to ask them about narrowing them down. So I didn't quite get how that goes in the timeline. And then I guess a follow-up to that is, can you give us to publish either the funnel or the timeline with some of those details chanked in? Because
Yes.
So we need to engage the community, we want to, we've been doing that. But if if we can't project, like I don't wanna be like, ooh, now, right, next week you have this. And I I know you're not putting exact dates, but like, there's a lot more community work, right? And I think putting that out there is helpful.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to do that and I think I said I'd do it last time and I haven't done it yet, so I apologize, but I will. Um, yes, the community survey is the kind of the biggest push this this quarter, but no, this, I think in business terms, this quarter. This phase. And that's where, you know, we really wanna encourage a lot of involvement, again, like you guys were super successful in Phase Two, we wanna do another big push on that. And then um, and then I know people follow along with, at the committee level as well. So that, you know, I'm happy to the extent that the chairs are happy to continue to ask for public feedback at those committee levels as you're having those detailed discussions in the shortlist discussion. And then um, in terms of future weighing in, what we've done in the past is that we would publish, just like we published the vision statement, we would publish the shortlist around the same time that we're coming to these two groups to present where we landed and ask for additional public feedback in kind of a broad way. We typically don't do a survey again, but we typically say, if you have any thoughts on this, just submit your comments. We can do like an email, like a form on the website if that's easy or have them email someone, but that's typically what we do it towards that um, end of Phase Three.
Um, just one follow-up, so then did, are, can community members add to that giant list? I didn't hear how that works.
Yes, so in the survey, we'll ask for any other ideas that they can add.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be, I guess I'm just confused about recollecting as much as we possibly can, right? And then it gets narrowed down and the public, how do they participate in that or they don't, they only participate in the narrowing down?
Right, so in the community survey, as well as the technical working sessions, we always ask, do you have any other ideas? It's not part of the survey because it's a new idea, so that, I'm sorry, I skipped over this. So we usually give a list of ideas that weren't captured in our original list to the committee to basically say, we want this in, we want this out. Often what happens though, not always, but often what happens is we have the idea in there, it's just that they didn't, it wasn't in the words that they were thinking of it. And so we're off, often we're like, that's actually incorporated in to be, we could make that more explicit by changing the way we're describing it. So we go through a process with the committee like that where we wanna go through those ideas, yeah.
Thank you. Brandy?
Thanks, Jen. Um, so when we were putting together the the vision and 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 um, core themes and goals, we were, we had this long list of feedback that had come from, you know, the original surveys and the the public engagement that we had done. And a lot of the stuff that was in there kind of fell under the more strategy level. So I know, for instance, um, you know, we we heard a lot about, say sidewalks. So I guess my ask is, when you guys put together that big brainstorming list to go back to all of those comments and and things that we couldn't, that really didn't fit into the vision and 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 goals that was much more specific, that just didn't quite fit in there. Um, and incorporate that into the big long list because I wanna make sure that all of that work kind of carries forward into sort of the strategies and stuff that we're, that we're gonna um, be looking at, so.
Yes, and I should've said that. So where do we get all these great ideas from? So we've created um, it's nothing like too official, but we basically have a list. Like every time we see a strategy idea, we just, in our office, we call it, put it in the strategy parking lot and we'll get to it in Phase Three. So when we're gathering the ideas, my whole team goes back to the existing conditions profiles and like refreshes our memory, cause we did it a while ago. I don't remember everything and the issues that were brought up. And then we go back to that, then we look for that strategy parking lot and bring in, well, where would this fit into a core theme? And we kind of sort them into the core themes. Um, and then we also just bring our own, you know, what what have we done in other communities and what have we seen work and things like that? Yeah, so thank you, I forgot to mention, where they, where do these great ideas come from? They don't all just come from our head.
And I think some of it, as we were having those discussions within the committee, you kept saying, that's not really a goal, that's a strategy, so we'll deal with it later. Okay, uh, Tricia, go ahead.
Um, hi, yeah, I was just wondering, um, just a few um, procedural things about the people that are gonna be involved, like with the local experts, I think you said about, I think maybe you said 20 local experts per kind of group. How are those local experts found? Um, I assume it can be residents, business owners, anyone that has a connection with Ashland, but how how are those local experts found and selected? And then the second part is department manager, like what is, maybe I missed it, but like what? Give an example of a department manager, is that like the planning department or and, or DPW? Like, um, maybe I missed what, who that is, what what department, how that works?
Great question, Tricia, thank you. So the, we're asking the committee to help identify who the technical experts are as well as, you know, town staff, but um, and I think we're gathering ideas, I can't remember where we left it, but I think we're asking committee members to send ideas.
Yeah, we're actually meeting tomorrow and we're gonna have a discussion and start making a list.
Yeah, so they, so the com- the comprehensive plan committee has a meeting tomorrow to start doing that list. And then um, in terms of the department managers, you got it right, you were completely right. So I think Pete, you're, oh, Pete's not here anymore. Yeah, I think Pete's a department manager. Michael, can you, can you answer the question about who are all the department managers and how many are there?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't have an exact list, but I mean, certainly, I mean, I do, but in this case, you know, certainly DPW, I mean, we would probably have everybody at the department head level be a part of this, even though like I'm not sure there's gonna be a lot of intersection with maybe the town clerk. But maybe there are when we start talking about specific strategies related to the community engagement piece. So yeah, so that that level, I guess you could say. Does that answer your question, Tricia?
Yes, I think so, thank you.
And I can add to that, which during our public meetings, Tricia, the our police chief, for example, showed up at one of our meetings in the box. Um, so there's already department manager engagement happening in a way. So kind of taking, continuing on that theme.
That's, that's great. And we also suggest, although it's up to the committee, um, we suggest you may wanna invite some of the department managers also to the technical working sessions.
Definitely, yeah.
For sure.
Definitely, they'll be part of that, yeah.
So um, so Jen, I I'm I'm interested, like in other communities where you've done this work, like how are those technical experts usually selected?
Yeah, we usually, you know, we have some suggestions, just department managers are often good or if there's a certain board, like planning board, a couple of planning board members should be at anything that is gonna talk about zoning. Um, so we suggest that, you know, we don't suggest the name of who it is, but we just say like, you should have some representation from these different things. And then the, yeah, the committee and the town staff or the city staff um, basically identify who they are, or sometimes they just ask their boards, like if you have a transportation-heavy core theme, which you do, you may, and do you have a transportation committee? I can't remember if you do.
We have several, we have a road traffic safety committee.
So you can also ask them if they know beyond their committees, if they have other folks in the community that they would suggest. So, you know, it depends on the community if they wanna do that, but I I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Anything else from?
Can I just piggyback on that? Uh, Jen, some of the committees that you just mentioned about the the traffic sta- study committee, a lot of the same people that are on the committee are department heads.
Right.
So, you know, it intertwines, it overlaps, so, you know, you you'd be repetitive that way as well, so. But I just, I just, the question that I was not going to ask, I'm gonna ask now. I apologize, but, cause I'm not trying to throw a wrench in this, but how do you keep personal bias out of this, this entire project?
Well, it's really hard as a planner and it's something that, you know, we are bound ethically not to have bias, but we're also bound ethically to serve a community good. So um, so we have to balance, balance that. Sometimes we feel like our bias is because we want it to be good for the community. Um, so just personally, that's something that planners, I think all over, probably struggle with. But the way we've designed the process, we've given a lot of authority to the decisions to the committee. And we, because- to the committee, and we, because, you know, actually, if you, if you had worked with a different consultant, I guarantee they would not have spent eight hours writing a collaborative vision statement. That's another way we keep our bias out of it, because we actually didn't write it.
Yep, I actually wasn't referring to your personal bias, I'm talking about the committee members themselves and their personal biases that may come into play. I would never, I would never question your bias, because I know certain people on the committee would, you'd be out.
They're watching me.
They're watching you.
I guess my answer to that is, you know, we all bring a bias, we can't help it, I don't, I don't want to get into roomy and stuff like that, but if you guys know the parable of the elephant, we all can only see the part of the elephant we're touching in the dark, like, nobody has a perfect view of the world of Ashland or of anything. So I think the reason the town selected, or the select board, I can't remember who appointed this committee, the planning board, okay. So the reason you selected this committee was because they bring different perspectives, and they actually bring a certain kind of bias that you're looking for, so it's supposed to be, hopefully it is, I think it might be, a microcosm of what you see in the community. And that's why we have some good debates and long meetings.
Yeah, I think so.
I was going to kind of reiterate that, too, that I think everyone in that room has bias, but there's so many of us that our biases hopefully will collaborate together for a good decision, right? But I think in some ways, we have a responsibility to bring that unique bias, like, I view my role there as a planning, planning board bias, if that makes any sense, just like, but occasionally, if I am bringing personal bias, like, at the last meeting, things came up relative to the 126 corridor, and I shared that I live in that area, therefore, if you're being transparent about your bias, I feel like that's important. So I've tried during the committee meetings to do that, like my planning board have versus, "I live at 126, this is what I think," type of thing, if that's helpful.
Yep, no, it is, thank you, appreciate that.
So, Michael, before you go, Michael, is there any other committee members who are online or here in person that want to comment or add to the discussion? We are all going to be meeting tomorrow night to continue the discussion that we just presented, or any public that either have a question or a comment, now would be your chance to do that? I see, I see Flo and Rob, do you guys have any comments, or were you just watching, Rob? You're good, okay, thank you. Okay, seeing none from, Rajeshri, you unmuted. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Rajeshri.
Well, I just wanted to thank Jen and her team for shepherding us, because we are a huge committee with a lot of opinions and a lot of choices, and to have us all focus on each of these activities through these working sessions, it's been, it's been a job. I'm sure, you know, it's a, it's a tough place to be, but we got through because everybody in the committee has a passion to do good for Ashland, and there's a vision that each one of us has and wants to take forward, and Jen and her team have been able to take us forward through that. So thank you, Jen, and for this presentation also, and we look forward to working with you again soon. Thank you.
And, Michael?
Yeah, just, actually, I'll make one comment as well, just kind of to piggyback on what Rajeshri said. I think, Jen, definitely appreciate your expertise and really your leadership in helping to shepherd this along. It was, we've been together as a committee now for over a year, and it was a really rough go at the start, but what's been interesting for me is to watch the committee evolve, and, you know, yes, there are some long discussions and all of that good stuff, but, you know, we started, like, weren't, you know, only a few people were talking, a lot of people were, I think, very reserved, and so now I think there's more open discussion and everything as everybody's gotten more comfortable, so it's been interesting to watch that evolve, and I think it's been, it's been good. So my question goes back to the technical experts again, and so, you know, we also have, we have local experts here, but we also have affiliate or affiliations with other organizations that, even though they might not necessarily be residents, they do have a, they're a stakeholder here. And do you, do you, is it okay to have some of them involved? And specifically, I'm thinking like with open space, so, you know, obviously, we'd have somebody from Open Space and Recreation, or in the Town Forest Committee, but should we also look at engaging like a conservation organization like the Sudbury Valley Trustees, and seeing if they would have a seat at the table, or Mass Audubon? Is that something that you would recommend?
I would say it's totally up to you all, different communities may have a different feeling about this.
Okay.
Some communities may feel like, well, we don't want an outside organization to, to, you know, put their finger on the scale on our priorities. Other communities may feel like, we, we don't have enough experts to fill the room, and we value their opinion, and we'd like for them to give input. You could do a middle ground, which I've never done before, but I just thought of it right this moment as I answered the question, where you have them come, but they don't provide an exit poll, maybe they're part of the discussion, and they can help to educate, you know, or inform, or however you want to say it, but they don't give an exit poll at the end, but up to you, yeah.
Yeah, like SVT, they have, they hold some of our conservation restrictions, they, you know, they could potentially hold more, I mean, they could, they're an integral partner.
Yeah. I would recommend that as a committee, we have that discussion, right? Tomorrow night, we're going to be talking about who we think we want to bring in, so I would say tomorrow night, recommend, you know, bring that in as part of the discussion, and as a committee, we can determine if we want to bring in these other partners.
But I think it's good that-
It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda.
I do think it's good to discuss it today, to kind of get feedback while the consultant's here, not there tomorrow. And so I will say that some communities, and the consultant can speak to it, have you speakers? The idea is you bring an expert who's not going to vote, but they're going to be a speaker to the little group. So I, for one, support your idea a lot, and I think, for example, I was thinking for economic development, inviting an economist from Framingham State. I know Peter has been working with Framingham State to make those connections, but those folks, in my opinion, should not have a vote, but they can certainly come to an economic development group and speak to us. So it could be the same kind of concept.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And is that, is that what you're referring to as the middle ground?
I think you could, I wasn't thinking of them as a speaker, but I think you could do that, and you could even have them, we break the larger group up into smaller groups to have a discussion with like four or five people, you could have that person or people be roaming the tables to do Q and A or whatever.
My understanding is some communities have done that, and that can be a useful way to sort of bring in gaps, because we might have all kinds of experts, but not regional experts. But we don't want regional people to vote.
Anna, are we agreeing?
It does happen, so we could record this and make sure it's in the minutes. Yeah. It took us how many years, Michael?
Just a few.
Right, so it does happen.
It does.
Yeah, but I'm glad you recognized it, that's progress.
I know.
Yeah, I'll shake your hand on that one.
Awesome.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Jen? Mark?
Mark, excuse me, Mark, somebody, 119 Main Street. Me and you have gone a pretty good ways of knowing each other.
He took my cookies.
My questions.
Yeah.
And I wanted to just make sure that the, that the people can understand what's going on. I came as a wannabe committee member, but ended up a citizen bystander, bystander, and having time to listen, to understand to what it was. I came to basically about ninety-five percent of the meetings, and it's understandable that you need to have the first words to get a sentence, and a sentence to get an idea. And by having Jen as the coordinator, her company and her, the other woman that comes with you.
Kat Nace.
Great duo to set up for twenty-nine folks. And now it's been coming down to this, which has been phenomenal at best, and understanding that as a citizen, who I, who thought that I kind of knew everything, I just began to know that this group gave me an eyes open by letting me speak, and she had patience for me to speak. Other than the people here, sometimes it says, "The microphone says it's way too much for you." I was happy to be there. This group is what the Ashland future and what the people, what the people put in, the plan in, the company has, the select board, everybody that has put their time in, is worth a gratitude, a thanks, and they fortunate to have them here. And as a citizen who was a wannabe, I'm just glad that I could have my input and was put up a couple of times on, on your visions, that I have put in my time, and as as town manager did with the retreat, is a form base to be coded. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, and we do appreciate your participation, and I would say that to all citizens who have participated, that we appreciate all the input and insight, because it's not our plan, it's our community's plan, and the more input we can get from the community, the better the plan will be. Great. Anything else for Jen? No? Okay. Thank you very much for this presentation, I think it was informative, I would say, if anyone has questions, please reach out, and we are going to continue with our agenda and let you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Okay.
I did want to comment as Jen leaves, that I think the planning board and select board did a great job choosing this particular consultant. And so gratitude to Jen and her team, but also to these boards in working together to get us here. For me, this presentation sort of reinforced that, and I remember those early days, as difficult as they were, I think that it was worth it to get to this point.
Great. Okay. Moving on, the next item in the agenda is presentation on MBTA communities. Again, this is for both boards to review and discuss. And Peter, are you or Alvaro giving us this? Great.
Ah, yes. Hello, town planner, Peter Magic, yes, we're going to present, Alvaro's going to PowerPoint, he's going to plug in, and then go from there.
I think there's extra paper copies, if you guys need it, over on the corner. Does anyone need a copy? Deepa, do you need a? And if there's anyone in the public who wants a copy, take a look at. Okay.
So as we pull up the PowerPoint, I just want to first and foremost thank Joe Mignani and Tricia Kendall. We've worked very hard to put this plan together, along with myself and Alvaro. Alvaro has really done an exceptional job with the GIS work and the modeling that has to be done by the state, but, but the PowerPoint is up and ready to go. Tricia, Alvaro and I will just kind of run through it, but obviously, I think you should jump in at any point that you want to talk about the process, and how we kind of landed, and additionally, Joe, please feel free and jump in. So with that said, if I may start, the MBTA communities, this has been a law that's been passed in 2020 by the former governor Charlie Baker, and just to recap real quick, the town of Ashland being home to a MBTA commuter rail station, is one of, I believe, a hundred and seventy-five communities in the state of Massachusetts and the Commonwealth that has to indoor, adopt zoning codes and zoning changes to allow for buy-ride housing. And so I think we all know, City Run's table, through long discussions concerning the housing crisis and the housing shortage, this was adopted to help, help ease some pressure that we're in. So with that said, the regulations here have, a community such as Ashland needs to zone an area fifty acres at a minimum, with forty percent of those acres, in this case, twenty acres, within a half mile of the MBTA station. No district can be greater, excuse me, no great, no district can be less than five acres. At least, half of the district has to be in one contiguous parcel as an overlay district. That has really been a big piece of the jigsaw puzzle we've had to kind of identify. Has to be a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. For multifamily developments, there shall be no age restrictions within that, and all districts need to have access to a train station, obviously. With that said, really, that kind of links back up to the part where forty percent indoor, forty percent of the total acreage needs to be within a half mile of that MBTA buffer.
Sure. So, just kind of like thinking about what we presented back on, probably was like a month or like two months ago that we were talking about this, just thinking of the different strategies that we could have done to approach this. One, that you would have been like really looking at the minimum density that Ashland could give, but in that case, you will be looking at the most area or acreage that you will be zoning, so in that case, you will be looking at fifteen units over seventy-five acres. The other, kind of like, at the scale or like at the maximum approach that you could have, it's looking at a minimum land area, but then having the highest density in that fifty acres, which is the minimum requirement, so twenty-three units per acre. And I guess just one thing to keep in mind is always that all this zoning viola regulations will be, still be in place for the MBTA. This is not like a 4EB that anything is kind of just like jumping over like the zoning, you're actually taking a look into everything that is within the zoning and the districts of the zoning underneath, of what will be kind of like presenting and approaching. Just to kind of like remind everybody that some of these layers were already given by the state, or all of these layers were given by the state, and they had certain limitations in some cases. For example, the excluded land was a layer that was given, just explaining and showing the areas that we will not be able to zone. There is some reasons to this, one of them, or the main one, just being a state or town on land. There is some ways around it, however, none of those were qualifying for Ashland, so that's why we decided to stay away completely from anything that was within the excluded land. In the case of sensitive land, these was areas that were really red flagged by the state, they will still be able to be used within this model at any capacity, either for density or for acreage, however, it's just kind of like a way of saying, make sure that you're keeping in mind that this could be a potential flow zone, so just make sure that when you're looking at the zoning, take that in consideration when you're writing the zoning, per se. And then in case of the density denominator, I think that was more to look into areas that were within in the middle of parcels that will be affecting at a certain level the creation of actual housing. So that's why these, it still counts for the acreage, however, it does not count for the density of housing. So you're basically looking at, it's called density denominator because it's just taking out of the denominator, but not out of the numerator, basically. Yeah, and I think that kind of like takes us and brings us back into this map that we've seen many times, and it's just kind of like showing the different parcels that we approach. I'll pass it down to Tricia so she can kind of like talk about the, the kind of like the analysis and the risk that we did, but just kind of like to like orient everybody. All of these are the parcels that we've talked, seen the spring back to the fall, and we kind of just like kept in our mind, looking at it, because we felt that all of these parcels were not in either of the two maximal approaches that we mentioned, so not going to maximize density or trying to maximize acreage, but instead of finding like the middle ground, where you're looking actually at the areas that are developed, and yet you're still opening for center areas to continue the, the actual like nature of like the zoning and the purpose of the zoning that it was approached, so.
Yeah, so Alvaro, did you want me to step in?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we can, yeah, let's go back down to the map just for a minute. And I can't remember who all has participated in our various presentations on this. So I'll go through it briefly and obviously take any questions. So these are now the seven areas that we were really studying carefully. Obviously, we looked at a lot more parcels through this process. But these seven are the kind of the ones we started to look at much more closely and as well as in the first phase of this. And then the new ones, the 40B projects that we added in after Springtown meeting. So A is obviously Cirrus, and we definitely want to include that. This is our largest land parcel by far. This is the one that gets us 50% contiguous inside the, well, 50% contiguous. It makes that requirement and you can see it's located within the half mile radius. So it's a really very important parcel for us to use. The green ones indicate, the two green things indicate that these are projects that are either built or in construction. B is 100 Chestnut Street in construction, over five acres. And as you remember probably from many meetings, how we talked about this, that in relationship to the comprehensive plan, which we're in the middle of, we really wanted to use parcels that that Ashland was already considering for housing, at least in most cases, right? To use what we already have and then to let the comprehensive plan process guide any future housing locations. And we felt, our small working group felt pretty strongly about not making decisions that should be made in the comprehensive plan process. So we're using, we're looking for things that we, that have already been determined that are already in process. So the orange part of these, D is UGC. As we all know, that's the, that's the Friendly 40B project that is still in litigation. And we don't really have any other information about that. We hope that we might, but we don't. C is 501 Pond Street in conjunction with Valley Farm, which is next door, which is a project that has been approved, but has not started construction yet. And then E, F, and G are ones that we studied a lot more closely this round. E is the Burnhams property plus Connect Church property. That's on Pleasant Street. You can see obviously it's another property within that half mile radius. And it's one that we did discuss in the first round of things on our public forums. And we had people both on both sides, for and against, like adding that parcel in at that time. There was, we thought there was more people maybe saying leave it out. So in the end, we left it out. We didn't think we needed to use it. And this, in this iteration of things, we are proposing to unit, use it. And then F is 10 to 60 Main Street, which as you can see is obviously right on the rim of that half mile radius, given that that is one of the 40B projects. And we looked at it more closely. Originally, we were leaving it out. And but we think we can use it in a very effective way and take some of the risk out of other projects. And G is Waverly Street. And Waverly Street is the second 40B project. And actually, after our analysis, we decided we'd rather not use that property. So if we can go up to the chart now, I have, we have the risk assessment on the next page, which everyone had been given before. But we'll kind of stay on this chart and I'm kind of just talking about the risk assessment and relationship to these. So what we, again, starting from the top Cirrus, this is currently at a building density of 14 units an acre. It's a little different than that. It's all, all these are a little bit more complicated because the bylaws are more complicated. But so and all that information is kind of listed here so you can look at it yourself. But we'll say that it's an approved density of 14 units an acre. We're looking to move that to 20 units an acre because it's a completed built project, fully occupied. And we think there's very little opportunity to add to that site and to increase the density effectively and economically. And it's using our biggest site. So we get the most units out of that, out of that site. 100 Chestnut Street, what we're doing there is the approved density is 28 units an acre. We're putting it up to 30 units an acre, again, to get the final unit count that we need. And kind of for the same reason, it's in construction. It would be kind of difficult for them to add, just add on units and parking kind of in the middle of this process. Into the orange sections, again, Pond Street and Valley Farm, that's over on Pond Street. We, again, can repeat myself, we don't think there's, we think there's very little possibility that the Valley Farm, Valley Farm property would be torn down to put up something else. And the 501 Pond Street project is approved, but not yet developed. That is a project with 120 units and at 25% affordable. So, but it's not in construction yet. And so we thought that project was a little bit risky and we really didn't want to use the 20, really didn't want to lose the 25% affordable. Under an MBTA zoning, it would go only to 12.5% affordable. We know, all know how important the 25% affordable is. So we lowered that down, that density, in order to basically put the density where, what they could do by right, you know, which would be a lower unit count. Peter, Alvaro would have to jump in about what the unit count would be for that parcel. I can't remember.
So then jump into it. So thank you, Tricia. So for 501 Pond Street, the unit count is in the low 80s by right. And so therefore, we're allowing it to, with the proposed unit count of 22, it would raise up into the low 90s. So it would give a few more, but it wouldn't allow that extra density to 120. So it's just the way the numbers kind of fell during our overall calculations. We were trying to keep that overall number closer to the allowed by right development, allowed under Pond Street mixed use district. Obviously, to protect that special permit was granted by the planning board in 2022.
Thanks, Peter. And then UGC, this is one, again, this is the Friendly 40B over 55 community. This is a parcel we, in the proposal that we're making, that we're putting for, before the joint boards, that we are taking that proposal out of the MBTA zoning. And the reason is that right now, it's, it's approved density is 10 units an acre. It's age restricted, it's 25% affordable, and that would be then 180 units. If we put it at our minimum of 15 units an acre, we would have 270 units, so 90 units more at 10% affordable and not age restricted. So we thought that was a pretty big difference and big sacrifice for a project that's in litigation. And we don't know how that's going to come out. Going on to the yellow areas, which are, which are the new areas. Pleasant Street, again, those two kind of parcels that I talked about. And it may actually be more parcels, but the two landowners there. When we looked at that more closely, and again, the zoning is more complicated than what we can put here. But basically, there is, those properties, the ADDA, you can already do multifamily housing or were mixed use. You don't have to do mixed use, but you could. So we thought it might be, it might be a good idea to use that parcel because it fulfills so many things that the MBTA zoning is looking for. And really, owners there can, can submit, that multifamily housing is already allowed there. So there really isn't a difference with the MBTA zoning. In fact, with the, with using FAR, which is how those parcels work, the density can potentially be much greater than 15 units an acre, which is fairly low. 10 to 60 Main Street, again, that's ADDA. And it cannot, it's industrial underneath, but ADDA, which allows for multifamily housing. And the, there we were looking at the 40B proposal. The 40B proposal, which obviously isn't approved or anything like that. But the density there is proposed is 36 units an acre, and that would be 250 units. We're proposing to put that at 18 units an acre, so half the density. And so that would be 124 units spread across that whole property. And then 61 Waverly, this is the one across from the high school, the proposed 40B. They're proposing it at 17 units an acre, which would be 20, 226 units. This is one that we decided to, we would like to take out of the MBTA zoning because there isn't that much of a difference between 17 units an acre and 15 units an acre in this case. So what would be, what we were concerned about is that the owner could decide, if we zone this at 15 units an acre, to pull out of the MB, so to pull out of the 40B process and propose the project at 15 units an acre, which would just be 27 units lower than they are proposing now, but the affordability would only be 10% instead of 25%. So we, we decided to try not to use that property. So that's kind of where everything sits. It's important to understand, again, that the underlying zoning, there's a lot of pieces to the underlying zoning, a lot of little tweaks. And all those go into the big state spreadsheet that, that Alvaro keeps. And it's also, you know, important to remember that that all of these projects need to go through, whether they're special permit or not special permit. Special permit comes up in a lot of different things. But they all, they all need to go through the site review process. So there's always a level, it's not like a 40B, it's always a level of check that it still comes through the planning board. And yeah, so I think, I think, I'm not a good in the evenings. But that's kind of where we landed. And it's, I'm sure it's not perfect, but we did work really hard and we, we think it's, we feel good about it. So be happy to answer any questions. I think there's a few more slides in summary. Here's the risk assessment. I basically already talked about that. You can, yeah, it's the same printout sheet that you guys have received earlier. And this is just kind of the summary of the green that we're looking to use and the red that we're looking not to use for the reasons I just explained. So this last slide just shows where we are with the minimum. So remember that we have to have at least 50 units, sorry, 50 acres. Our proposal puts us at 56.12 acres. So we're keeping those acres pretty low about how it affects Ashland. And it sets the number of units to about 1,136. It could be 12 or nine. It's a little over what we need, so it's a little wiggle room, depending on these tiny little changes between our calculations and the state, which Alvaro could describe better. The density in the proposal ranges from 20 to 30 units an acre in properties that are already built or under construction. So the ones that we don't think are likely to change. And 15 to 22 units an acre, so a lower density in projects that are just proposed or not proposed yet. So yeah, so that's where we sit. Happy to take any questions.
Can I, can I jump in?
Sure.
I just want to add one thing with Joe and Alvaro and Pete's. What we're trying to do is we're also trying to protect the 25% affordability, which is what we're trying to, you know, get to our 10%, which is what the state is requiring. And anytime we try to play the game or a project has already been, you know, submitted and they withdraw because they think they have a better opportunity, then we lose that 25% affordability you know, for the town aspect to get to the goal of the 10% that the state's requiring. So this part, this particular plan and that was presented tonight will protect that from happening. So.
I like how you consider that affordability and keeping the 25%. Anna, go ahead.
So one basic math question and then sort of a more complex one. So when I add A, B, C, E, and F, which are all the ones that are being recommended, my math is 55, 42, not.
56 something.
Yeah. So is it 55?
You are correct. So these numbers, and jump in, Alvaro. So these numbers start off just on paper, right? And that's what we're plugging in, right? The next step, which we're really kind of behind the scenes, is to plug in all these numbers within a state model, a state algorithm, right?
Taking out all the stuff.
And it's taken out all of that. What that algorithm, and Alvaro correct me if I'm wrong, is taking into account is, is parking, overall land setbacks, X, Y, and Z, right?
That's great. I just want to make sure.
That algorithm that shaves your, that total down to the number that we have to be above, which is 1124, right? And so that number is in total. So really, the number we're trying to hit is anything above 1124. So right now, we have a buffer of like 10 units per se, right? Above that 1124. And so that's our, so there's a couple of numbers when we're, when we're working with this.
That's fine. I just want to make sure because if the public starts doing the math, they'll have the same question.
I think just kind of like the short answer for the money is probably the density denominators that we were talking about. They are included for the acreage in the total 56.12, but they are not able to use it when you're multiplying for the density.
Right. That's important. And so, you know, so that's the more complex question, which is obviously, you can do this in a variety of ways. And if you add up all the stuff that's low risk, you end up under 50. If you, or the no, like A, B, C, F, which is no or likely no, you end up to 48.56, which is less than 50. If you add up all, in other words, the configuration can't be too few acres or too, too, too big acres. But my question is, if you go over the 50, in theory, can you go down to 50? Can you essentially rezone just a section of a, of a, what do you call it?
Of a parcel.
A section of a, of a district, because a district has to be five acres or greater. So could you essentially choose to use the MBTA zoning to get to 50? Take one of these somewhat risky pieces, but zone a smaller piece of it to limit, to make the risk less likely? In other words, for example, UGC Memorial Drive has some risk and it's therefore disfavored. But if only a section of it, for example, A, B, and C, which are all no risk or low, together add up to 41.66. D, UGC Memorial is another 17.9 acres. So you're up to almost 60, 59.64. But you only need 50. So I guess my question is, if you only zone, whatever the math is, 10 of it, doesn't that limit the, doesn't that make the risk, the risk less likely? Can't we turn these somewhat risky areas into lower risk by doing the math in a way that makes it unlikely the developer is going to take advantage of this?
I think in the spirit of the, in the law, the law that was passed at state level, we have created a plan that meets the law, that takes, that takes some of the risk out, but also meets the intent. Can you do what you're stating? Can you, can you zone a portion of a lot? I, you know what, I assume you can, right?
Five acres or greater is all you need per district. So the bylaw or the state law seems to allow us, as long as each section is five acres or greater, we can essentially eliminate a lot of this risk.
But here's the thing, there has to be one contiguous acre. That's half of the total acres that you're, you're doing. And that's why Cirrus is very.
Right, which I guess what I'm saying is, UGC Memorial, by my math, you can, you can actually zone enough to get to 50 and lower the risk because you're not, you don't need the whole thing to get to 50. You only need whatever, 10 of the 17.
This kind of goes to a question that I had is that can the state reject our plan based on they don't like what our intent is? You know, intent and the law is really a tricky area. And my experience is that lots of times, they don't care what the intent is. As, well, I can say that. And, but what is the letter of the law?
It's a great question.
And so here, I mean, can. And so here, I mean, can-
We don't know, right? The state, a few communities have adopted this, right? A few big communities in the fall, I mean, last spring, a town meeting have adopted this. The HA, I mean, the H O L C and the AG's office, they have not, to my knowledge, put their final stamp of approval on it.
But they, they have to? I mean, if we, if we follow the letter of the law and do what we've been asked to do, they can still reject it? That's within their power or not?
Any bylaw that they, that's not constitutional, then they could, any bylaw, they have the power to reject.
Right, but if we're following, you know.
Yeah, so, so Claudia, you, you just need to remember that even the, um, even the communities that say put in their proposals and approve their proposals at spring town meeting, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but they haven't even been cleared yet. Um, it's taking six months for them to really look carefully to make sure all the I's have been dotted, the T's have been crossed, right? So we're obviously putting on our best effort to, to meet the letter of the law, right? But this whole thing, even though I think it's a lot of data, is it, is an extremely simplified version of the spreadsheet that, that Elvero has been putting together for the state. So yes, we believe that we are meeting the letter of the law. We believe that, right? But until they go through and really confirm it, and I do think, I mean, we did, um, you know, we did, Anna had suggested this idea of, of using a, a part of a parcel, like cutting through it, right? And at, at one of our planning board meetings. And we, and we talked about that and we, and we did look at it. But we weren't sure, we didn't think it was just the best way to go, that it kind of added complexity to the bylaws we were creating. You know, where do we make that line versus, versus taking parcels that are already, that already have boundaries, that already are on the, on the state map as a parcel, right? Versus taking a part of a parcel. So we didn't see, when you'd know that we, we did look at it, but we didn't see, and, and Joe, anyone else can, uh, jump in here. But we didn't think that that was the, that that was a better way to go than the way we were thinking about it.
So my understanding is the state is available as a technical expert. Was that framed to them as a possibility?
Well, I think that is, right, this is that they provide to like, when you're like creating the parcel itself on like the model, they do recommend, they say that sure, you can kind of like go over like a parcel, but they do recommend for the exercise of the spreadsheet to try to like delineate based on the parcels that already existed. And they are like assessed by the assessors map that they give you. Now, you could try to do that, then you will have to try to override it and then you'll have to try to work on it. But I think that for-
So it's possible. It's not illegal. It, it's a state, the state allows it. So I just want to be clear, we're not going to be, this is not unconstitutional. This is not forbidden. This is a solution to limit the risk that we're identifying. We're just choosing not to do it because it's somewhat complicated, but there are technical experts in the state that we can utilize and it, it's not forbidden. I want to make that clear. I'm not hearing in any way that what the idea is forbidden.
As far as we know, it's not forbidden, but the working group on looking at it decided that that the path we were going in was a cleaner way to fulfill the MBTA requirements, so.
And also protect the, the twenty-five percent affordability of that project. Because if you start tampering with that, the, the landlord himself could say, okay, I'm done. I'm, I'm going to put another project in here. This is not the project that, you know. So now that, that whole project that has already been approved and the twenty-five percent affordability goes off the table. And now he, the landlord, can put whatever he wants in there without any guarantees of the twenty-five percent affordability that we once had.
But, but I, but that's-
Hold on. Affordability is what this town is required to do. Ten percent is, is our goal. And taking projects that are already been approved at twenty-five percent, that's, that's ridiculous. You don't want to take that away. Whether, whether you take a half, yeah, half an acre or whatever, a, a portion or the five, five acres that you were recommending to, to change that around. Well, that changes the whole aspect of the project that, that's already been presented. So even the current project developer, you know, they like their plan. They're not going to change their plan because they've already, Michael, Michael Hopel will agree to me, they've already put large amounts of money invested into this project.
Right, but the risk is if we change the zoning, they could.
If we change the zoning, then the possibility of them saying, you know what, this is not what we want.
Kate, can I just, can I make a comment to clarify? So sixty-one Waverly Street Place has not been approved. That is a forty-B project that this community opposed and the planning board submitted a comment. I believe the town submitted a comment. There has been no approval of that project. So
Which is nice enough.
Which is the idea that somehow we're going to get in the way of an approved project is just not accurate. So for that one-
That parcel.
For that, that's the parcel that I pers-
Right, he was talking about UGC, because that's where you started.
Oh, yeah, any parcel that has some risk, including UGC, it's, it's the exact same concept. If you only take a piece of it and zone it for the MBTA, sure, UGC has been approved. That's one point. But for sixty-one Waverly, it has not.
No, I know, but you, you, your initial example was you could see, you know.
Maybe Memorial cannot be cut as easily, but sixty-one Waverly, to your point, this is a healthy kind of conversation. But sixty-one Waverly, which has not been approved, which I believe this community is not a fan of, would be a prime target of being able to, uh, what's the word, take a piece of that to make it slightly different. Will that developer say, oh, I don't want to do a forty-B anymore. Instead, I'm going to build a, uh, ten percent affordable on a piece of it? I, I would, I would think that's unlikely, that they're going to say, oh, half of it is now ten percent. Let's do that.
Kate, you had a comment?
Well, I did want to speak to Claudia's, because if you actually go to the state website, they, they actually very much say communities that have built housing are allowed to take advantage of it. So we're, we're doing-
Are allowed to take advantage of the housing that you've already built.
Yeah.
Right, and that we're doing here, right?
Yeah, but I mean, that question was can we do this? Yes, we can. We, because there are things built, we are doing nothing wrong. We are following the law, so.
Yeah, I was actually talking about the, the land that Anna was talking about splitting up that is not built upon.
But, but it has a project proposed, right? So that's part of it. So, um, and I can, I guess, um, one thing was the Cirrus, so did we look at increasing the density somewhat to get the unit counts?
We did.
No, more than twenty. I mean, what, I don't understand.
You're, you're saying increase Cirrus by, to twenty-five, for example?
Yeah, just whatever.
Oh, that's interesting.
What would happen with that?
Well, you have to remember that, and Elvero might be able to answer more than I, you have to remember that the other zoning in place has to allow that to happen. So we, we already know up at Cirrus that there's not enough parking, right, say? And it's limited to a certain height, uh, in the bylaws, right? So those things still have to be maintained. So you can't say, we'll put a lot of units up there and build it six stories, you know? Because we'd have to change the zoning to allow six stories or, or whatever to make that happen. Right, so you'd only have certain amount of wiggle room because it still has to fit within the bylaws that are in place unless we also change those bylaws. Does that make sense?
So, but that is the maximum. And someone did all the calculations for exactly that amount of land to say it's twenty?
We've done a lot of calculations in putting a lot of different set of, sets of numbers within the state model, right? To make it all work, to make it all factor out in pencil at the end of the day. And, and Tricia is right, right? If you throw a bunch of stuff in, the models can also knock it down more because of certain setbacks and areas, right? And restrictions within those parcels. And so you're, you're, we're trying to thread the needle here, right? We're trying to take everything into consideration. And we're trying to, you know, really, it's a balancing act, I would say, at the best. And I think we've come to a, a, an act or a plan, right? That is balanced throughout, that meets the integrity of the law as passed. And that obviously takes advantage of housing that we have promoted and, and developed here in Ashland.
So I think, Kate, I think you're asking like, well, what about, what if it's twenty-one units an acre instead of twenty? Like is twenty the magic number? Is that your question?
Well, especially, yeah, because even if it's twenty-one, that's fifty more units. Because it's a lot of land, um, actually, I'm sorry, it's fifty, forty, it's twenty-nine, so it's twenty-nine more units. But it's, it's a lot, right? So one or two units makes a giant impact on the number.
No, I get it. So Elvero, I mean, we did play around with these numbers a little bit. Elvero, do you have any, um, data on that?
Uh, I guess I can like pin down like what would be the exact perfect number to put it. Um, twenty was not in any way like highlighted saying that, you know, with a maximum of three stories above grade and four from the setback was like affecting it in any sort of way. So that's why we were trying to keep it at that number, if that answers your question.
I, I know, but that's okay.
Do you know, Elvero, wait a minute, Elvero, do you know that twenty-one didn't work? Do we know that or is twenty-one too close to the, you know, I don't, I don't remember, you know, in the process.
I think that we looked at twenty-five and we did have like a flag on it, but we brought it about twenty because we were looking at just kind of like spreading the density, not making just one area like extremely dense. Um, yeah, that's.
Well, so for my perspective, right, that Ashland already said certain areas, they allowed that. And when it's built, we don't all tend to like it, which is two separate things. But, so I think, I mean, that's a, that's a ripe for picking to looking at going up one or two. If five was a flag but didn't kick it off, I mean, that's five times twenty-nine acres. That's a lot of housing units that could be put back into Cirrus' calculation. On a parcel that is readily agreed should be in. So I feel like that has to be pushed to, um, what's the maximum that fits the model.
And where would you take the units out?
Um, well, I-
What would you eliminate?
Well, I don't think that ten to sixty may, well, I, I don't think the parcels in ADDA, unless they have commercial, I think they need serious consideration, right? Because it's our, our downtown, ten to sixty main is currently all commercial and it's a commercial center. So to take it on MBTA and put the possibility of only housing, I, I do not think that's a great idea. So it, it, it's, um, I, I don't see how that makes sense. And if you read our bylaws, um, that ADDA, right, it's, it's the purpose of the district to provide a framework to encourage growth and development of successful downtown, promote village salary development with a mix of commercial, retail, residential uses of walking environment. Particularly the A specifically is the highest of commercials. So proposing to completely get rid of commercial on a parcel in the middle of the downtown, I, I, I don't, I don't understand that.
Well, you, you have to remember-
Hold on, you guys, Michael wanted to add something, so I'm going to let Michael jump in here.
I was going to ask a question, but just to Kate's point, so it, doesn't the zoning already allow for all residential there?
The zoning allows for residential, right? And it makes use of element, yeah, at a, at a really higher rate, at a two, two-point-oh FAR, right? If, if doing the math and the calculations, right, having a two-point-oh FAR on that site, right? And then multiplying the, the, the building square footage that you could get with a two FAR, right? And then factoring out the thirteen percent, which is on average, but what it makes you, what mixed-use buildings are proposing here in Ashland to be over there all square footage, you would have a much larger building.
Yeah, I, well, I, I agree, but.
Correct.
Just real quick, just for those watching who may not know, can you explain what FAR is?
FAR is floor, floor area ratio, right? So for a two-point-oh floor area ratio, you're taking the size of the parcel, you're multiplying it by two. Obviously, you're creating a square footage through a, a, a factor, of a process of obviously multiplying, um, the total number of acres by how much is it in a square foot. How much square feet is in an acre? It's, it's forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty. Um, so with that said, it's, it's a big structure that you would be allowing to be built over there, right? However, there are other regulations, right? There are height regulations, there's parking regulations. No one's saying that actually that would, all the units would fit, right, with that commercial? Because with the factoring in the totals of the FAR, um, but also you got to realize that site to, to, to financially redevelop that site is going to take a lot of units to, to financially make that, 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 a, a project commercially work. Um, and, and so this number at ten to sixty main shoot is well below what was proposed in front of the planning board. Um, and the, on the, the project that was worked on throughout that planning board process.
Yeah, I, I think that just the point that I was trying to make, and Kate, I would agree. I think what, what we would like to see at ten to sixty main and, and really a lot of parcels downtown is like that mixed use, right? But I, I do think it's important to note that the existing zoning allows for mixed use, but it also allows for all residential.
Well, no, I understand that, but when we're making a proposal, so another overlay, the, the base zoning's commercial, the overlay allows many things, right? Your density that you're saying. And then we're going to create an overlay that's only housing, which to me is, is channeling a value that I'm okay with just housing there.
But you already got a value that says it's okay to just have housing. You got it under existing zoning?
Well, we, we would hope that developers read the intent and the spirit of our bylaw and we would hope to improve them so we can go back to saying, I think you want the mixed use. I, that's what we hear from people. I'm not trying to make this the Kate Jurzick plan. I have our real bylaws, so, so I, I feel like that's just not a good way to go. And then to Peter's point about the, the one developer that was in front of us, I just want to say, I have never seen any economic data from that person. We never had anything evaluated by independents. So given that there was a billions of dollar bond bill about housing, there could be projects that do not look like something that was brought in front of us or the forty-B, right? That I, I don't think people are saying don't have any housing, but all housing in a giant commercial in the middle of your downtown, I don't think is something we want to promote. Through a new bylaw.
It's, it's like not, it's a hundred and twenty-four units, so it's, it's some housing. I mean, a hundred, the, the project proposed at five oh one, which is a, you know, small, is a hundred and twenty units. So, um, and it has to fit, it would have to fit under all our concern, all our current zoning. I think the important thing here today, because we need, we need concrete feedback, right? So, because this is about it, we're kind of at the end of our timeline here. So if the, if the dual boards are saying, we don't want to use ten to sixty unless we have to, we need that as a directive. The, the board, the working group has put together something that we believe in, we think is a good plan, we think minimizes risk in, in all of our categories. We think, um, reflects, um, using, using what we have, which is what our, our goals were, you know? So, but if the joint boards, we're just the working group, if the joint boards have a, a combined opinion that says, take out ten to sixty main if, if you can and up the percentage to Cirrus as highest you can and explain, you know, and, and go that way for town meeting. We can look at that, but we need, we can't be just throwing out ideas at this point. We need to say, this is what we want you to do, working group. And if not, then go, then do your plan if it doesn't work, right? Because we're, we're out of time. And so we need very definitive direction.
So let me ask a question. The way that these overlays work, so we have ADDA in downtown. If we had MBTA communities, that would be another overlay. And then basically what would happen is if a developer outside of the forty-B process, say the forty-B gets denied, decides to file a new project, they would choose which one to apply for. And you're saying basically like that the ADDA would have a higher density anyway than what we would be proposing under MBTA communities. So most likely, even if, even if we do keep ten to sixty Main Street in there, someone would want to develop more housing because, as we discussed, financially feasible, that project would need more housing. So is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Couldn't I say it better?
Okay, so. See, I swoop in at the last minute.
But a forty, a forty-B supersedes everything.
A forty-B supersedes everything. If it's approved, if it's approved.
Right, if it's approved, but you know, that's the problem with all of this.
And I just want to be careful about that because yes, it is very true that the zoning board can deny a forty-B project. But the reality is, is that the develop, what makes a forty-B, I'll, I'll just say dangerous, is that it can be denied at the local level. But then they have the opportunity, under the forty-B process, to appeal it to a special committee known as the Housing Appeals Committee, which hears that. They could, a developer could even appeal it if the project is approved with conditions that the developer feels like they make it uneconomical. And if you look at the history of the Housing Appeals Committee and how they rule on these decisions, the large majority, I would say over ninety percent, they find in favor of the developer. And so that's why most experts around fortyBs will tell you that your best approach would be to approve it with conditions. And there's some strategy involved in that because when you get to the Housing Appeals Committee, if there's conditions attached, the Housing Appeals Committee can modify- And there's some strategy involved in that, because when you get to the Housing Appeals Committee, if there's conditions attached, the Housing Appeals Committee can modify conditions. But if, if you just deny a project and the developer appeals it and the Housing Appeals Committee fines for the developer, the zoning board, you lose all local control over imposing conditions. So I, I do want, it, it is true that yes, it can be denied at the local level. And I know that's probably what a lot of people are going to want us to do, and I totally understand it. But the reality is, is that under forty B, there's another step that's not available under traditional zoning, which favors the developer.
Yeah, and, and the thing is that, that I would hate to have the forty B process go forward and ha- have, you know, a huge number of units built there and not get credit for it. Within the MBTA zoning. I mean, I, I just feel like that we're getting hit twice instead of getting hit once.
Hmm.
Um, I mean.
So can I, uh, go, go ahead, Marcel.
No, there, there's just one, Claudia just made me think about this, um, because we talked about this earlier. I, I think in, in general, um, I, I am very pleased with the process. We talked about this a lot and some things that we, some of us disagreed in terms of Pleasant Street have been turned around. So the process has been really good and I am comfortable with what's being proposed here. Relative to Main Street. I feel that that project should remain here, not only for the reason of the numbers or the possibilities, but A, because of what Michael said, you know, the, the, I, the danger is not a new danger. Different than what the zoning already allows. But the spirit of the, of the law that Massachusetts wants is the possibility that people will leave close to a commu- to, to a rail station. No, no other parcel is clearer than that one. Tough to be in such a large parcel so close to a train station. Adding more numbers to CERIS or something that has been built is, is against the, the spirit of that. So I think if we're gonna be kind of honest with trying to, yeah, massage it to, to be con- be convenient for Ashland, I'm all for that. Uh, but, but, but here we can almost have it both ways. It's something that makes reasonable sense to me, but also attacks the spirit of, of this regulation a little more straight.
It, just a, a point of clarification. So let's just say the zoning as this proposed zoning as the working group has put together, goes forward to town meeting and let's say it, it passes, right? Is there anything that precludes us from going back and revisiting it next year and maybe making some tweaks to it?
No, and I think a lot of communities are gonna do that. And I think we probably will do that with the comprehensive plan, right? We need to have a, you know, of the state law, we need to have a zone, you know, pass a town meeting come this December thirty-first, right? After the next thing after December thirty-first, in my eyes, is the completion of the comprehensive plan, right? So looking at the comprehensive plan, look at the zoning, looking at the areas of development that in the process that Jen just outlined. Are there gonna be tweaks? Probably, right? And we're gonna go, have to go back through this whole process, right? And we're gonna have to go back and use the same model that we're using right now and plug different things in and, and move forward. Um, also at that time, maybe we have understanding what happens with the forty Bs, if you move things around, what do you wanna shift? Of course, this is zoning, it's fluent, right? There's nothing about it that's, that is, is, is set in stone, right? Um, but yes, we do have the ability to do that. And I, I, and I, as a town planner, I suspect we're gonna do that and have to go through that exercise.
And the state would let us go and change it after, as long as we met?
As long as we continue to follow the, the regulations set forth within the law. But also this, this model, quote unquote, that they've produced for all communities to use to make sure that everybody is statutory compliant. I, I think that, of course, they have to let us change.
I've been trying to say something for a while.
Okay, then go ahead.
Yeah, um, so I, I kinda have three points I wanna very quickly say. One is the comprehensive plan process, there's been quite a bit of talk, at least in the groups I participated in, in a vibrant downtown. And there's now a, I believe, an effort being made by the, one of the histor- history-related committees to define a downtown history district. Um, there's quite a bit of energy around there and therefore I personally am not a hundred percent comfortable including Main Street in there. Because I think it will be highly inconvenient for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee to have a zoning plan for Main Street, to then have to redo this entire process, this MBTA process. Um, or to be threatened by the idea that the MBTA zoning has already defined that property and therefore we should not touch it as part of the comprehensive plan process. And so if we, this group is going to take Main Street and make it part of it, I would like us to agree that the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee is not prohibited from rezoning it again. And from us coming back here again for another round of MBT work. And I would not be comfortable voting it for, for, and for Main Street to be included otherwise, because I think it would directly get in the way of the comprehensive plan work. That's number one, and what vibrant downtown means. Um, number two is the idea of meeting the MBTA requirement in Ashland. By rezoning five different parcels makes me uncomfortable. Ashland has done a ton of work already. We are not your standard community that's being impacted by MBTA zoning. We're way ahead of the curve. We've done a, a lot of work for, for housing. We are essentially already there. This type of zoning changed by the state is meant to create towns like Ashland. Ashland is already hyper-dense relative to other communities. And so I personally am not comfortable using MBT zoning to rezone five parcels. I would like to find a way to only rezone four, because we've done enough already as a community. And I for one would like to do a little bit of extra work and figure out a way to indeed take a piece of a fourth. And so me personally, I would recommend A, B, C, and then eight-point-three-four acres out of Waverly Street. I don't think eight-point-three-four acres out of that one will jeopardize that project. Um, and I think that way we can tell to the public, listen, we know we did everything already. We know this is not really about us. We've met the requirement with only four, well, really three and a half parcels. And we have done everything we can to minimize the impact on our community, because we've already done all this work that the state is trying to frankly motivate in other communities, not ours. Thank you.
So just.
Hold, hold on. So we have a charge from Tricia, right? She has asked, the subcommittee has done a lot of work and I have listened to your, your, your comments, Anna. Um, I believe that based on what Peter just said, not even five minutes ago, was that if we approve this and it gets through town meeting. Comprehensive plan will still have the ability to review this and we as a community will still have an ability to review this MBTA zoning. So the one thing. Uh, in regards to, yes, Ashland has, has done a lot of building and we've used that as, as a strategy against some of the forty Bs. Will it work? We don't know yet. We haven't heard back from mass housing on these forty Bs. Uh, but because we don't have our ten percent affordable, we are at risk with certain things. So what I'm going to ask from the committees, if people are ready for this, is Tricia has asked for direction. Do we feel that what they've presented is something that the majority of us, and it's gonna be a majority vote and some people may be unhappy and that happens at this point. We are, we are at risk, we need to have this approved and presented and available for town meeting on November nineteenth. I know the planning board has a hearing on this for October tenth, if I read correctly, yes?
That is correct.
Okay, so, um, based on that information, I will let Brandy say her piece and then I would like us to. Okay, and then after, after Brandy and Claudia, I'd like us to give our yes or no. Do we support the plan as presented? Or do we feel the majority of us feel that the subcommittee has to do more work? Brandy, go ahead.
So just to that end, um, first of all, I really appreciate all the work you guys have put into this, because, you know, there's been a crap-ton of work. So let's just recognize that. So thank you guys for, for the, the work that the subcommittee has done. And I appreciate all the, the intricacies of, you know, the affordable housing discussion and parcels at risk and how things have kind of ebbed and changed based on the forty B situation. I think it's important to include the ten to sixty Main Street parcel in there. I'm fully in support of revisiting this at some later point in time. Um, if that, if that is necessary, I think that, you know, we can definitely do that. I do support the recommendations that the sub, that this, this working group has made. I think one of the other things that is really important when we go to town meeting is that we present a very well-thought-out, simplified plan. Because if we, if we present something that is incredibly complex for people to understand where things are coming from and how we got there, it's not gonna pass. And I think that, you know, this is a zoning exercise, this is not, we are building eleven-hundred units of housing, this is a zoning exercise. So I think that, you know, the work that the, that the working group has put into this, I think is our best, um, I think our best plan for.
Strategy.
Best strategy for, for how to get this through to town meeting in a way that does not impact the town of Ashland before the comprehensive plan is completed. So that is, that's kind of where I, where I fall on it.
Claudia?
And, and let me say one more thing, Yolanda.
Yep.
I mean, I think, I, I'm not, at this point, I'm not comfortable with dividing single parcels into being two different zones. I just think that complicates our work in a, I'm not even sure we could, we could get there, you know, by the deadlines we have. And to me, that seems like a complicated solution to the problem. I think, you know, if it, if it makes people feel more comfortable, we could look at reducing and just take a look at it to see if it works. If it, if ten to sixty can be reduced to the minimum at fifteen units an acre. And so it makes it even more unappealing to develop that, 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 cause it's pretty low. Um, um, and, and if, and if, uh, CERIS apartments could accept those units on top of the twenty. Like that's a tweak in what we were doing, you know, that we could see if worked. Like I would, I would, I would deem that like a friendly amendment, that if it works, we'll go in that direction, otherwise we'll go in the direction we have. I'm just trying to take into account the board's, the board's comment.
So Tricia, you're suggesting keep in ten to sixty Main Street, but instead of having eighteen units, it would be fifteen units?
If it, if it can be absorbed in the state model.
And then, and then to CERIS add, it wouldn't, it would be more than three units per acre, right? Because the ten to sixty Main Street parcel is smaller, correct?
So it should be, it should be less than three units an acre, I think.
Yeah, and just by fact, can I jump in here real quick? So if you did that and you multiplied that, you're, right now, we have the ten to sixty Main Street pro- building, correct me? Um, at eighteen, if you shifted that down to the minimum fifteen, that's that one, that's moving that to one oh four.
Okay.
As a total, so in theory, you're shifting around twenty units.
Into, into CERIS.
You can do it into CERIS, you can do it into other units and it's just a shift of, you're, we're mathematically shifting numbers.
Well, CERIS is nice, cause it's a low probability.
You know what, well, you know what, I would probably go to CERIS first. CERIS gives you the biggest bang for your buck, because it's twenty-eight acres.
So if it's, so if it's twenty-eight acres, it sounds like we'd only have to add one unit.
That's correct.
Per acre, make that twenty-one units per acre and at twenty-eight, so we would add an additional twenty-eight there. And we've lost twenty at ten to sixty Main Street.
Correct, and it's, it's just a matter of the model, and I'm, I assume the model will be okay and it will be able to accept it and, and I think.
And then the only change we're making from the suggestion of the subcommittee is we would also remove F of ten to six, no. We would keep ten to sixty Main Street in it, but we would make this reduction.
Yes, because you also need the acres. That six-point-five acres means a lot.
Right, okay.
You know what I mean, in that total, because you just can't think about acres.
So to the subcommittee, is that something, I would say, check it to make sure it works with the state model? Does that then, Anna, I mean, it would keep it in this, but it reduces the number? I mean, it's definitely a move in the right direction. Okay. Claudia, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just, you know, thank, thank you to the subcommittee again, like Brandy said. I did attend, um, one of the forums one evening, um, the public forum, and it was very well done, the public understood it. Um, it, it was simple, it, it, the presentation is just really superb in my mind. Um, and I did actually review the one that you just had Monday night, thank you, Alvaro. Um, so I, I didn't wanna miss anything. Um, you know, and, and I just wanna take, Anna, to your points about this, the issue isn't, I think, our community. Um, and, and the way we're doing things, it is indeed, um, we have done all the things that you have outlined. We are where we should, probably should be, except for that important affordable housing number. Um, but in terms of adding housing, we've done all that and we have no freaking power here, none. And so it, really, this is about kind of minimizing, um, any more that, in, in this case, could be damaging to our community. Based on what I think the feedback in the comprehensive plan has been. And I am relieved to know that it can be revisited again after the comprehensive plan moves along further. Um, I think that that's a good thing. But I, I think when, when this goes before the town, I think it, it, at, at town meeting, I think it needs to be made very clear about what's happened. I think we got, the one thing that has to be done, I think we have to draw really strong distinctions between forty Bs and the MBTA housing. I think everybody knows there's been a lot of confusion around those two issues and for good reason. Um, and, and I think that, you know, a- again, it, that we're fifty acres, right? Why should a town our size be fif- have fifty acres? Wouldn't one expect that a town our size, at this particular density level, that the law might take in those things into account? It does not. It's fifty acres if we were, you know, if, whatever, a huge, a huge land.
Every town that has a train station has to supply the fifty acres.
Such an arbitrary way of doing things. It does not take into account the existing density, it doesn't take into account, uh, it actually, the existing density kind of works against you, so.
Right. Are you saying it's a crappy law?
I'm saying it's a really crappy law and, uh, you know.
Agree, I think everybody would maybe concur.
Okay. It's probably a great law for a town that's not Ashland, that has done absolutely nothing.
Well, that's why if you took in some of these other things into account, like the number of units that have been added in this community in the last, you know, ten years or so.
Yeah, okay.
So do you, do you have, actually have the fees right now that, that we were talking about reducing ten to sixty Main Street?
Yeah, I just, I wrote it and read it, so if it's fifteen, if we reduce it to fifteen, it becomes a hundred and four. And we add twenty, make it twenty-one for CERIS, it adds an extra twenty-eight, so, yeah. Kate?
So I have a question for Peter, because we're talking about revisiting it. Trust me, as a planning board member, I, we should be looking at our zoning, so I'm thrilled to hear people, and I hope we continue that. So my question is, do you have any indication, is this perpetual? Cause now we built more units and now we have to zone for more units, like what's the, like, I don't think they're freezing this.
I don't know. You know what, nobody knows that question, right? How is it change, what, you know, I've asked that question.
Yeah.
To some, to so many people, right? And nobody can tell me this, uh, tell me an answer, because here's the thing. On it, they're just trying to get people to comply, right off the bat. What the criteria is that can, is it gonna be annual? Obviously, annual, um, submission, right? I don't know, is it gonna be a biannual update? Um, I, we don't know yet.
So I think that's, that's the crazy thing about this law, is that it's only requiring the zoning. So when they created this law, they're like, great, we're gonna create this zoning around MBTA. But there's no, there's no hook that says you have to build it, which to our, to our, for us, it's an advantage, right? That we just have to create this zoning. But long-term, their goal is gonna be to build some housing, because we are short housing.
We're sort of proposing already saying, we probably want to look at some changes. Is that gonna open the door to say, well, you've built since then more units and now you have to zone for more units?
My gut check from what I've heard from different people in different communities that are dealing with this, is it's gonna depend on how much housing actually gets created. As to what the state is gonna ask for. Are they gonna ask for more if there actually is more housing built from this or not? And, and, and as we know, it could change on the administration that's there, the housing that actually gets built, and how many communities comply.
And it could get repealed.
It could, it could get.
We don't know what's gonna happen. At the end of the day, all these housing numbers at the state level across the board are all dependent on the decennial census.
Right.
Right? The SHI is all dependent on the decennial census, it changed that, that factor changes every ten years. So theoretically, right, when the decennial census, when the new two thousand and twenty, you know, thirty numbers, thank you so much. Twenty-thirty numbers roll out in twenty-thirty-two, right, which is unbelievable. Twenty thirty numbers roll out in twenty thirty-two, right, which I'd unbelievably still say that. Yeah, maybe we'll, we'll have to update, and we're gonna have to submit, in every town, we'll have to submit new modeling information to the state to say, hey, you guys have to go through this exercise. So, so theoretically, maybe baseline, it's a zoning exercise that every town is gonna have to, not every town, a hundred and seventy-four towns.
By MBTA.
Have to go through every ten years, or once every ten years. And so maybe that's, that's what I could say if I had to link two and two together with knowing what, how the state operates. Um, that would be my, that's my best guess.
Okay, so based on the recommended change for ten to sixty Main Street of fifteen instead of eighteen, and then moving it into Cirrus at twenty-one, that will get us our numbers, but you're gonna double-check it. Um, so Tricia and Joe have asked, do we as boards support that? And then support what they're presenting to present at town meeting? So A, B, and C would be part of it, E would be part of it, F would be part of it, but with changes.
So I, I wanna.
And E, right? You're, you're talking about the whole thing, A, B, C.
Yep, A, B, C, E, and F.
So we had talked about commercial being viable, and I know that you have to apply, and I know we did unpleasant, so I don't know, and I know it doesn't affect the unit counts, but like, the whole.
Have we done it for Main Street, you mean?
Well, the whole thing that we're proposing, like, I, I hope that's not just completely obliterated.
No, it's not, and we, we, we applied for it for Pleasant Street as requested. We're still waiting to hear back on the state, and so we're actually gonna work that into our bylaw that's dependent upon approval at the state.
So would we also do that for Main?
I thought we were looking into that.
We did not, we, we, there was a conversation, but it was not, it was not.
And that's requiring commercial.
That conversation was not completed.
So I, I will say, I will reluctantly support the A, B, C, E, F plan, reluctantly for the reasons I stated. I, I have to say that it's a decision by process where I would have hoped the working group would have, rather than saying, well, Anna has this idea about splitting one of these babies up to make it four parcels, but we just think it's too much, it would have been helpful to see if it's implausible. Um, so I'm not, I'm, I'm somewhat frustrated that it's a decision by process, because the process essentially limits our, my ability to do much, because we're out of time. So I will, I, I'm very reluctantly going to go along with this, because I'm not given any options. But I will say that uh, having the state do the commercial at Main Street would be really important, a, a request, just like we did with Pleasant Street, and I would vote for it.
You know, part of the reason we're out of time, right, is because we had these forty B projects come on, and I for one was like, no, but we were ready to kind of move forward in the spring, and then we had the forty Bs. So that would have given us more time.
My other comment would be is we've all had the ability to give our input to the working group.
No, no, I did, and I didn't see a proposal of that for this discussion. Like, essentially, the working group decided on its own that, oh, well, it's complicated. But I would have liked to see that as part of a discussion tonight, like, what is complicated? Because if the working group couldn't figure out where to draw the line to create eight point three four acres, I think we as a group could have figured it out. Or the working group, or the working group level bringing it here. So I'm simply recognizing that the process here is not ideal. And therefore, I will, I will support this as is, but I'm doing so openly stating the fact that an idea that was suggested was not fully explored.
There's lots of things, there's lots of things to critique here. I don't think it's the working group in this particular case, and believe me, I would, I think.
You know what?
This is the state and everything, that, a lot of things that have happened to this community in the past year.
I, I would, I would say
crunch, so.
That I'm gonna take your comments as, you know, from, from, from a select board perspective. I would, I don't know exactly how the subcommittee worked, but I know they worked very hard. I know they've looked at a lot of different things, that it didn't come back to us. I, I'm okay with that. If, if they looked at it and they, and they tried to figure it out, I'm okay with that, so.
No, no, obviously, I'm voting for it as well.
Looking for now is, and I'm gonna start with the select board, and then the planning board can do their process. Do we as a board, uh, support what has been recommended by the subcommittee in regards to A, B, C, E, and F with the changes in the numbers? And then the only thing I would add is also if we can check on adding commercial for Pleasant Street and Main Street. We don't have to take an official vote, but do we?
We support it.
Do you support it?
Yes.
Joe? Randy?
Yes.
And I as well. So from the, from our, from the select board, Tricia, we support this with those changes.
Okay, with the, so with the same description that you gave.
Yep.
I will take the same responses from the planning board. I think Deepa is there, right?
Yes.
So, Deepa, you're a yes?
Yes.
And who's?
I'm gonna.
Kate was next.
I, about sort of the commercial and all of that, but I, I know we have to go forward, so, um, I wish we were in a different place here, but, so I'm having my reservations and yes.
Okay. I think I already said yes.
No reservations, yes.
Great.
All right, and then I'm a yes, so.
So.
We will, we will take those two things under consideration, that the swapping of the density a little bit, and looking for commercial for Main Street as well as Pleasant Street, and then, um, moving forward with those bylaws.
Great.
Peter, Peter, is that doable? Peter and Alvaro?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, with the, with the, uh, with the team we have, and obviously with Joe and, and you, Tricia, we can do that.
Okay, and, and I just want to say thank you again to the subcommittee, the work that you've put into, and, you know, Pete and Alvaro, so thank you very much for that.
Yes, thank you.
Any other joint conversation that we need to have as boards?
Just one quick, are we meeting on September twenty-third?
Yes. That is the, the meet and greet on September twenty-third. Um, the, we've talked about that data, it was talked about back in August, and, um.
Cause I wasn't sure if you, yeah, I'm looking at your face, and I'm gonna.
We, I apologize in advance, I'm gonna be out of the country, so I, I will not be able to make it. But I believe the rest of the board is.
I just wanna make sure, I wanna make sure they're all together.
Okay, so we will see you all on the twenty-third, so that's next week, Monday, except for Anna. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys need to do what you need, yep, they need to adjourn.
Tricia, do you wanna adjourn us?
Yeah, we will adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa, I think that.
Catherine, Jersey, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Anna, Tespadis, aye.
Give you guys a minute, um. We'll have cookies now, because that'll keep us going.
Thank you.
Birthday cookies.
Tricia, thanks for coming up with that, uh, that, you know, solution that helped with Anna on such a, you know, so easily, so quickly. Thank you.
Cookies for the way out.
They're birthday cookies, so there's no calories.
Anna will high-five next, okay?
One, beep steps. We don't want to scare people, Michael.
I know. Free people out. It'll be like, what's happening with the rain?
I know, really. Glass of wine. Another cookie, Michael?
Oh, yeah, or two.
Are you still doing your movie nights?
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I, I don't mean to get.
Anna, Kate, another cookie?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay. Kate?
I am, dream, dream trip, Paris.
Tomorrow, yes, we're at seven. Comp plan is seven tomorrow, and then.
That's a good excuse to miss the movie.
Hope you're going someplace fun.
I thought of joining you virtually from the cafe in Paris, but I thought that would be cool.
You're on vacation, Anna? Take the vacation.
As you know, there's a, oh gosh, sorry about that. I just didn't have the mic close enough. So, we had the feasibility study for washakeum, which is, you know, treatment of the algae and the things that are making it basically. Yeah, it's really difficult to, to use that for any kind of recreation.
They actually shut, they shut the beaches down in Framingham. That was one of the beaches that was shut down because of the bacteria.
Yeah, so, so actually, we're gonna split the cost of this, since the majority of it is in Framingham, washakeum, they're gonna pay for seventy-five percent and we do twenty-five percent. So, that's the CPC article. So, article number seven, so it's still kinda running through our internal process, but it's a new blight bylaw. So, we have started getting more complaints and concerns about property maintenance and, you know, basically, people not maintaining their property. And, you know, how that leads to basically a deterioration of property values, leads to, you know, potentially crime, you know, that whole broken windows theory.
Don't we already have a blight?
We didn't.
Oh, no, we never, we've talked about it, but we've never done it.
We've never done it.
Blight.
A blight bylaw. Yeah, so.
Is that going through planning board or?
No, it, so the Board of Health would actually, so, with the way the blight bylaw would work, it would name different entities in town that would be the enforcement agents. So, right now, it's currently the building, the way it's written, it would be the building commissioner, it'd be the health director, and police and fire. So, I need to meet with police and fire and make sure that they're on board with everything. I do think they should play a role in this. And then if, you know, the property owner that gets cited, you know, if they want to appeal that, they would be appealing it to the Board of Health. So, it was reviewed with the Board of Health last night. Dave probably gave you, you know, some feedback and.
Yeah, I heard a little bit, a little bit about it. I guess there was some technology issues.
With Doug, yeah. He turned sixty-seven today, that's all I'll say.
Happy birthday to Doug.
Yeah.
Um, so, Dave, Dave just told me that they, they had heard about the blight bylaw and I said, is that going in front of planning board? Cause I figured it was a zoning thing and he's like, I don't, I don't know.
No, it's not a zoning, it's not a zoning thing.
So, we've talked about it as a board many years ago.
Yes, we did.
Were you part of that discussion or not? Okay.
I had heard, I, I had heard a little bit about this, like, before, like, it wasn't quite ready for town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, who's, who's rewriting it and who's?
So, Doug and Raj are really taking the lead on it.
Okay.
Working with Lisa. So, I, I got plugged in a little bit more earlier this week and, you know, added my comments to it. There's a few things I'd like them to tweak.
Do we have to approve it going to town meeting?
So, it's your warrant, so.
Okay.
You would need, you would need to be okay with putting it on the warrant.
So, can, yeah, so say, can we add it to our October eighteenth agenda? So, we can discuss it, have maybe Doug come or someone from Board of Health if they're supporting this to discuss it, so we can determine, do we wanna move this forward? I would think.
One man's blight.
Well, and how the enforcement is gonna work too, because I think that's like key, is trying to figure out how, how it's going to be enforced and what are the regular.
I wouldn't want it to just go from in front of Board of, just from in front of Board of Health to a town meeting agenda. I'd want it to be here for other public opinion and stuff, so, okay.
I would run it by Attorney Meehan as well.
He already, she's already.
Yeah, she's the one who, who drafted it and, so like, right now, I mean, to your point, I, some of the language, some of the definitions are kinda squishy, which I pointed out some concern. So, you know, for example, it says, you know, like, grass being, you know, unkempt or something, I mean, who makes that determination?
I mean, I, I just know that, you know, certain communities have these kinds of things and this was very drastic, but there was a house that I was, I was told about and they didn't mow their lawn. And the landlord got cited by the town, so the landlord said, okay, if you're not gonna maintain the lawn, I'm gonna cut down all the trees. So, now that's a very drastic measure, but I just want us to be careful and.
I don't think we're gonna be able to predict all of that.
No, 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 but if, can we get a copy of it, you know, rather than wait until the eighteenth, let's get it out to us so we can at least look and, if there's any questions, okay.
Does that include nuisance as well?
Nuisance would be something different, a little bit, a little bit different.
Nuisance is the dog that barks at all hours and blight is, because it doesn't look good.
This is more.
Nuisance could also be a vacant home.
Yeah, so this would, so part of this.
As a, as a playhouse.
So, it's so funny, so, just like the definitions, you know, grass or like there's rotted, you know, trim and boarded up windows and it's like, hey, guess what, guys? You know what a prime example of this is? The Valentine property. And, so, I think, you know, I think we've gotta think about that and how that, how that works, so. So, yeah, I, we're gonna meet, I think, next week with police and fire and I gave Doug and Raj my instructions. On specifying some things. This also requires vacant properties, so the owner to register them with the town and, and there is a fee associated with that. This is very similar to when I did in Lowell back, ways back and it was, it was pretty effective, so.
So, let me ask you a question, if you don't mind me adding chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
How about dumpsters on a property? Whether they're private or commercial, and I'll use the Home or Rabbit issue.
It's a donation box.
That's a donation, that's a donation box.
Totally different, but it's on the property of an individual that's allowing that to happen. Is that individual responsible for his property?
I, I, I think something needs to be done there. I don't know if it's planned aid, needs to get the box out of there, better control it, or if it's.
There's a big sign on it now that talks about illegal dumping and I didn't get to see the whole thing, but it says.
We already have something on the books.
We already have, yeah, on, on.
Yeah, we do have donations then.
We have, yeah, we have bylaws.
But, you know, maybe it's a good idea to, to review that and just.
Make sure that it's.
Yeah, what the enforcement looks like and what the process looks like and at what point do we require them to remove it or whatever it is, so, I mean, it's not a bad.
There might actually, it's been a while since we, we put it forward and I haven't reviewed it recently, so there might actually be stuff in there about like removing it.
I think, okay, anything else?
So, there's, there's blight and then the MBTA communities. Finally, you didn't think I'd forget that. And then, so finally, we might have an opportunity to purchase a piece of property that abuts the town forest. Obviously, I don't wanna talk, you know, too much about it, but I, I will say that we're working with a land conservation partner. And we're looking at a number of different funding mechanisms, not just town funds. Unfortunately, what we're finding out, and bring this up, is, so there are two big grants that we wanted to apply for that this parcel would be perfect for. And unfortunately, because we don't have an approved open space and recreation plan, we're not gonna be able to apply for those.
So, SVT won't be able to.
They'll be, they'll be able to do one of them.
They'll be able to help.
Second, the, one of the grants specifically requires you to have an approved open space and recreation plan.
Actually, it looks like both might.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And the one that we originally did that started back in twenty seventeen, never got, it got part, it never got complete approval and even if it had, it expired this year.
I was gonna ask, like, so, because, because I remember we talked about an open space plan.
We've been talking about it for a while.
But, so is that, is that the open space and rec?
Committee.
Committee didn't see it through or is it more like?
It's their responsibility to get it through.
And what is, how did you get it in place? Does it go, does the plan go before the town or just?
It doesn't have to go before the town or us. What happens is, the open space and rec, they have requirements as to what they need to do to complete the plan. The, and if, I don't know if you remember, guys remember, but back between fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, there was a number of public engagements where they reviewed the plan. So, they, to do, to do the next plan, they have to do that same public engagement. And based on what we're seeing, we don't think, we don't know that they'll be able to do it, so.
But we've known about the deficiency in the public engagement for a while now and I'm not sure anything has been done since.
Right, so this is, this goes back to our appointment of committees, right? We've sometimes just rubber stamped people sitting there and unfortunately, this could come back to bite us, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little frustrating, I know.
Something that we should ask the representative to come in and talk with.
I can forward you some information that I already have on it and then we can go from there.
That would be helpful, thanks.
Yeah, cause I, I do think, you know, it's, it's great to have an open space and recreation plan just from a planning perspective and, but, you know, when it starts impacting our ability to, to potentially get millions in grant funds, I think, so that's.
It's disappointing.
There's, there's some real consequences there.
Could that, could that affect any, any funding that you folks would be looking for on the jackpot?
No, 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 that's all. Yeah, that's a different, different. Okay, anything else? Okay, great. Uh, moving on in our agenda, vote to reduce in-person early voting hours for week one only as indicated below. Uh, is this because of staffing or just what they're seeing as potential for in-person and most people are doing mail-in?
Um, it's a, it's a combination of things, um, you know, that's Cindy's recommendation based on.
So, this will be on the website, but Saturday, ten nineteen, ten to four, Monday, ten twenty-one, ten to two, Tuesday, ten twenty-two, ten to two, Wednesday, ten twenty-three, two to six. Thursday, ten twenty-four, ten to two, Friday, ten twenty-five, nine to noon, Saturday, twin twenties, ten twenty-six, ten to four, Monday, ten twenty-eight, eight to three thirty. Tuesday, ten twenty-nine, eight to three thirty, Wednesday, ten thirty, eight to seven, Thursday, ten thirty-one, eight to three thirty, and Friday, eleven-one, uh, nine to noon. And then, of course, we all know the election is on the sixth, fifth of November. So, questions or comments?
Just a question, is Cindy planning to use the, the basement of town hall for early voting? Okay, sounds good.
Okay, Claudia?
The other thing is, you know, I think over time, we might need to kinda reconsider what voting looks like, right? It's changing and, and maybe we need to provide more resources to the early voting that happens in town hall. Because it does, I, I think there's a lot that has happened, basically, from what, you know, Cindy told me, I had inquired after the, you know, the primary and most of it. In any case, so, you know, maybe they need some additional resources from seniors or whoever we use at, at the school. In, in terms of trying to be able to do that at, in town hall. I mean, I don't know, she didn't say that to me, but just listening to it, I'm thinking.
When you say additional resources, meaning more personnel or budget?
Well, I don't know, I mean, maybe budget, maybe some, we just maybe need to reallocate some things from the schools. We're gonna have significantly fewer people.
I mean, I think unfortunately, on election day, you have to have, you have to be able to have all the precincts set up and able for people to vote, so.
I mean, I think what we're seeing is so many more people are taking advantage of mail-in voting. That's really where kinda the trend is going. And it's interesting because, you know, back in twenty twenty, like, the majority of people voted by mail. Now, that was COVID.
Right.
And it was also the first time that mail-in voting was allowed. So, it's interesting, you don't have the same concerns with COVID now as you did back in twenty twenty, but.
But now it's a convenience thing.
A lot more people used to it.
You don't have to, you don't have to ask for a special, if you wanna not go to vote because you had to have, either you were traveling or you were sick or you physically, you know, absentee ballot, so.
Yeah, yeah, I actually filled out my request for a mail-in ballot for the first time, you know, this, this year, yeah.
Yes, for me, I, I like to go in and vote, so.
I do too, but I, I, I missed the primary, like, wasn't able to do it and, yeah.
Okay, so, the, uh, the schedule that I read off, uh, it is, it's a reduction from other years, so I, we need to, if I can get a motion to approve the early voting hours that I just read off.
So moved.
So moved.
And a second, Joe go second.
I'll second, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brandy, thank you, Joe. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes five, uh, four zero. Tell Cindy thank you for organizing all that.
Yeah, she's great, she really is.
Okay, uh, that moves us to Town Manager Report.
Okay, I'll just do it as a mishmash, I know we have priority projects here listed, but there's a few other things, so. First, uh, just, you know, a bit of good news, so I sent to the board the fact that S and P reaffirmed our triple A rating. And, yeah, it was, uh, you know, I, I was a bit concerned and yes, they, they had quite a few questions. And we were able to answer them adequately. We, meaning, you know, myself and Brittany and Cindy Sincotta, a great team. And, um, so, yeah, I, I did get a copy of the, of the draft report. I mean, they do make mention of the fact that we had a deficit and the fact that we had to use one-time revenues and it's something that, we need to watch, but, you know, what they said is based on our, our strong performance before and our strong, we, we still got a very strong top rating in our management category, they felt confident in giving us the triple A rating again. So, um, if we do this next year, it could be a little bit, a little bit different, but we'll see. Um, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. And it's really good timing because, um, the Fed dropped, uh, the interest rates by fifty basis points, which I was a little bit surprised. So, we're, you know, doing that ahead of, ahead of a borrowing, that's great. So, congratulations to everybody involved in that. So, the next one's a little bit of, of an odd one. Um, so I don't know if any of you have heard, Claudia, I think you know about this, that the coyote at the Men's Death School. So, we have a coyote who has, uh, taken a liking to a rock essentially at the Men's Death School and is camping out there. And is not afraid of humans, uh, one bit and is, has skillfully evaded, uh, the traps that we have set. So, unfortunately, we have to look at the next steps, um, to take care of that. And so, I'm working with the police department and the environmental police and the, uh, school department to, uh, come up with a.
Removal plan.
Removal plan.
Removal plan.
It might not happen in front of students.
Claudia, come on.
You would hope.
Just wanna, you know, put that out there.
Yes.
Has, has, has the coyote come out when the kids are out, like, like to that point?
That's my understanding, like, they have, they have strategies in place, they have people to make sure that the kids are safe and, yeah.
It's not rabid, but it's, it's certainly got some mange and, and stuff.
Well, but a coyote out in the middle of the day too is not a healthy coyote.
Nowadays, it's, it's regular.
I see him go through my backyard.
I, I wondered how they decided that it wasn't rabid, I mean, maybe it wasn't acting rabid, but then.
No, no, you would know if it's rabid.
You would definitely, oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm not as up on coyotes.
And then there was a bear on Sudbury Road.
I know, it's like, it's like National Geographic here.
I mean, think about it, where the school is sitting, up until however many years ago, was forest, right? There was partly field, but partly forest, so, we're, we've taken some of his range away and.
Was gonna come and see Fox and.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, you know.
I never, I was there for a lot of years, I never saw.
You never saw?
No.
So, you know, I, I think given, you know, the proximity of the school and everything, there's a little bit more concern than if you just saw this wandering out. And, and he's, he's not like wandering, he's like camping, yeah, it is.
Move the rock, maybe it'll go in the rock.
Uh, yeah, that rock's not.
Yeah, I don't think that's going anywhere.
Oh, my gosh. So, let's see, there's that. I'm telling you, this is the most interesting job sometimes, I would say that. So, we did get some good news on the downtown project, we did get bids in this time, uh, as opposed to the last time where we got no bids. Um, and actually, the low bid came in under our estimates, so, um, so we're starting off well. So, we're getting that, um, that work under contract, I'm sorry?
The local person, huh?
No, and we really did, we thought this would be a good job for local contractors, uh, because it was just like the site work, the excavation work. So, we did talk to a couple of local ones and asked them why they, they, um, why they didn't bid and it was just a little bit too big for them. You know, to, the, the, kind of the fixed costs associated with that.
So, what's the timing?
So, hopefully if we, you know, the contract documents are being exchanged and, and hopefully we'll get that started next week, or we'll get that finalized next week. And then, you know, I think our deadline is mid-November to have that done. So, concurrently, we also are meeting next week to put together the RFP for the next phase, which is actually the electrical connections. And so, what I'd like to do is.
Oh, this isn't.
This is just the site work, so like laying the conduit. Remember, so what we did, the first time we went out to bid, it was for both.
Everything, okay.
Site work and the electrical connections and we got no bids.
Oh, so you had, you had to divide them up?
Yeah, so, based on some of the feedback that we got, we said, okay, let's split it up. And so, that's what we did. And that work, like I said, we got seven bids on this one. Um, but what we're gonna do is while that work's going, we hope to have out to bid the electrical connections. So, hopefully that'll be ready, basically, as soon as the, this first phase is done, we can move right into the second phase.
And then they'll be out a week after that taking the polls down.
I love your optimism, the best.
I mean, you seeing what we're dealing with, with one twenty-six and some of that? I mean, it's, it's gonna be the same process. So, there's, uh, so there's that.
Quick question, so the, so like, the, um, the first phase of this, that, that were, that has already gone out to bid, that has to be done before the ground freezes, right? Like, that has to be, so like, from a timing perspective, we need to have that done, like, November-ish, right?
Yeah, that's why the, you know, November, mid-November is.
I mean, who knows, this year it could be December before the ground freezes.
You know, it's, it's amazing, we were pouring concrete, or, yeah, concrete, you know, when we were doing the sidewalks and everything, a little bit later, it's just cause of the temperatures were lower than we anticipated.
I was just curious, anything?
I, I do have a question. They have to dig, right, to put the conduit in the ground? Where were they gonna put it in the road or under the, or near the sidewalk?
So, this would be, this, no, this is their, the properties, like the.
Oh, so, individual home.
Exactly, yeah.
So, have.
I thought we already put the conduit in the.
Yeah, so the conduit is in the ground, like, on, in the right of way, right? And it's, and it's, you got the main lines and then you've run it and you'll see the handholds, you know, handholds in the, in the concrete and the sidewalk.
Sidewalks, okay.
So, yes, this is gonna be the work on, on individual properties.
Okay.
And so, yeah, you, you'll run the electrical stuff from the handholds.
Okay, so we're not having to dig up any of the sidewalks or anything like that?
We might have to do, like, in, in a couple spaces like that.
It's more from the side, from the end of the sidewalk to the property, okay.
That's where I get a little nervous, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's the stub.
Yeah.
Uh, if I can have a motion to go past ten o'clock?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, Upper Charles Trail, you know, uh, we were, we got, we received the grant, thanks to Joel and the committee, to purchase that piece of property. Um, unfortunately, we haven't heard back from the property owner, um, on this. So, we had a great initial discussion, got what we needed to submit the grant and, uh, we've been ghosted. Um, so, I, I've given the property owner a deadline in which to respond to us by. That deadline is actually tomorrow. And I did indicate in, in that letter that, you know, if we do not hear back, we'll have to look at different, you know, alternative measures. So, um, so hopefully we'll hear back from them by tomorrow. Um, but if not, then, you know, we, we have some decisions that we need to make.
Okay.
So, Warren Barn, um, so just to kind of remind everybody, so, our intent has been to build a replica of the barn. Framingham State has a bigger project that includes a rink and, and kind of a reimagining of that space. And so, we were kind of engaged in this partnership and exploring that. So, basically, you know, we had committed one point two five million, Framingham State had committed four hundred thousand, actually, it's about five hundred thousand because they paid for the study and stuff. So, when we got the estimates back after coming up with the design and everything, the estimates, basically, it's one point four million dollars more than what we've already allocated. And so, Framingham State has proposed that we split that fifty-fifty. I'm not necessarily sure that's the right thing, um, so I have not gone through that estimate yet and, and looked at it in detail, but, um, that's kinda where we stand now and, and, you know, it, I'm not necessarily sure if fifty-fifty is the right thing. Especially if we're, if our main concern is getting the barn built, uh, in replica, it's one thing.
So, I'm sorry, one point four on top of the one. One point four?
Yeah.
On top of the one point two five we already have?
Well, the one point, the one point six, yeah, yeah. About three million, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Wow.
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot.
So, is that because of the amenities and things that the, that, that Framingham State wants to put into the barn or is it?
I haven't looked at the estimate, so I don't know, like, so our last one, we went out to bid for a replica of the barn, it came out at like one point two. So, I'm not sure if this, if that's gone up, you know, it's, I, I have to look at it, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, cause I'm just, I'm just thinking, like, if, if it's due to, basically, the proposal that Framingham State wants to include, that's over and above, then.
Yeah, I, I did, um, talk to Mr. McKay about this a little bit and, and he did feel that, that there were some items that could actually come out, off, off the project and other things that could be, potentially be delayed and.
Well, Dale, and, so Dale's the one who took a shot at that, based on that discussion that we had. And I think after he did that, that's what was remaining. But, again, I, I have to look at the estimate at the fine tooth comb. But, the other thing that we have to think about is if we are, let's just say, we are gonna contribute some extra money to it, not, you know, whatever amount. We have to look at what our agreement is with Framingham State moving forward in terms of like revenue sharing and things of that nature, so. So, it, it, it's not just one isolated thing, so, you know, you have the investment of the capital costs, but then you also have, I'll, I'll just call it the revenue and cost sharing agreement as well that we have to think about.
Right, and maintenance, like a maintenance thing.
Right, there's lots of things that need to be negotiated.
And are, are those some of the things that are being discussed in your meetings, Claudia, or?
No, no, we're really not.
At this point, we're really not that far along.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the thing is, is, so we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a tight window potentially, uh, for this. Because, you know, I know Framingham State, so it's not, it's Framingham State, but then it's also the Mass State College Building Authority. So, their board is looking to approve this in October at some point. I have to go back through and review the dates, but.
Is this something we should put a placeholder on special town meeting or are we not ready for that?
Oh, it's not a town.
Okay, okay.
But if, if there's a short window, it should come to us for review and, and a vote.
Yes, because you, you'll need to vote on it.
Okay, so it's just us approving, okay.
Yeah, but, um, it's.
So are we looking at the potential start this year, or early next year?
Um, I, you know, I think the hope was maybe to, to start this year, later this year, you know, some aspects of it, but, um.
They probably want the rink part.
The rink's gonna be, the rinks go anyways.
Okay.
The rink is.
Oh, they're definitely doing that this, this season, oh.
Startup date for that.
Well, that's what they want, Claudia, but that's, I mean, we have to come up with all of that agreement and, and stuff like that, because right now, right now, the barn, remember, the barn has aspects incorporated a part of that that supports the rink, and so if we're saying. Like if we ultimately say, hey, you know what, it's just too much for us, we'd rather just spend the money and build a replica of the barn, that kind of ex nays the rink plan as well.
Yeah, but I, I think that, that, the rink is already pre-purchased and everything, I believe. Yeah, I think the rink is going up, and that, the utilization of it this year was gonna be different, because the barn would be there to support it, like the bathrooms and that kind of thing.
But as far as like property goes, is that on, is that considered our property, or is that considered Framingham State's property?
So the rink would go, so there would be.
It would be partial on both.
Partially on our property, so, I mean, I haven't.
Before they come, before they start building anything, if it's going on anything that.
We need to approve that.
Well, no, I mean, it would actually be me that would approve whether or not they had the, basically, a, a right of entry agreement.
Okay.
Um, and I'm hesitant to do that, kind of just based on some of this stuff that's up in the air. It's a lot of questions, and unfortunately, this goes to like the whole, like, too many projects kind of thing, it's hard to like, really sit down and focus on this one. But we'll figure it out.
Site there last month, right, did, wasn't, or maybe it was the, the meeting, the last inside meeting that we had, the previous one. Where they specifically talked about having already purchased the rink.
Yeah, I don't remember that, Claudia, but I, I could totally have missed it.
You were at that indoor meeting, that one.
I mean, I, I was at one, is that the one where we met indoors, or then we, then we walked the property a bit more?
Yeah.
Cause we did both.
It might have been the previ- the one before that.
Could be.
Cause you were there for the, when we walked.
Yeah, and I, I mean, Jen's also working on this too, but Jen's not here tonight, so I've been kind of running.
Very likely on our, that first meeting in October, we're gonna have to review this, okay.
And then two last things, so I, I did, uh, talk to Superintendent Adams, uh, last week about a number of things, but one of the things we did discuss was, um. The athletic fields at the school, and I did inform him that, you know, we would be looking to transition that. Um, the school fields, the maintenance and scheduling of that back to the schools, and, um, so he understood. Um, we, you know, obviously, this is gonna be a transition, so like a, you know, year to two-year transition. So we're just kind of in the nascent stages now of getting the information and, and, um, yeah, it's gonna take a while for them to. Cause we gotta think about all kinds of things, like equipment and, and stuff like that, so it could be, it's gonna be complicated. Um, but we will, you know, start that process, and I think it, it actually makes sense for everybody.
I would think even just, like, if we could, I understand from a maintenance perspective, there's, there's equipment and things like that, but just from a scheduling perspective, it would be great if they could take that, because my understanding, what I've been told is, we, there's other groups scheduled, and then they get bumped because school take priority, so if they're, if they're managing the school stuff, they should, I would think, take it on, all on.
The fields are a disgrace, an absolute disgrace, and, I mean, they're.
In bad shape, yeah.
They're in bad shape, they're all, they're all, very close to unplayable, as a matter of fact, the softball field at the middle school was unplayable this year.
Really?
Well, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
The fields that exist and were, and could be fine, but are not.
Yeah, so it's, um, yeah, um, and then finally, so the reservoir level, so, um. I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from Dan Mauer, but, um, I, I do think, like, we've hit, like, the level where we would go into stage one. Because we're in September, like, those restrictions don't go into effect, the thing is, is if we do hit stage two, then those restrictions do go into effect, the, the date doesn't matter, and that, that's no outdoor watering and stuff.
So I know in other years, when we were at this stage, a little bit earlier in August, we would always take a vote to say that the, the, we as a select board give the town manager approval to make that call if necessary past September first. Um, it wasn't on the agenda, so I don't know that we can take a vote to give you approval to do that. But is that, is this the kind of thing that because of the timing of when we created the agenda, that we should take that vote or not? Or can we wait until our first, our meeting in October, or?
We, I certainly got this information within the four, the forty, the forty-eight hour window.
Yeah, so it was less than forty-eight hours, so.
I mean, I think.
Part of me says, should we, should we take that vote to say, if we get further information that we need to go to stage two, that we give you approval to enact stage two because of water restrictions?
Yeah, yeah, I think it made sense, you know, Susan just reminded me, we are, we do have a brief meeting on the thirtieth, but it might make sense to just go ahead and do it now.
On the thirtieth, oh, that Monday?
Yeah, cause we're doing the, the borrowing.
Right, right.
Real quick.
I guess it's.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because this has been, I've had a gentleman today, as I was lining the fields at Stone Pond. He saw something on Facebook about this, and he was very, very polite, but he wanted to know, why aren't we using Italian with the MWR eight? We spent all that money, but why haven't we used it yet?
Because our bylaw only allows us to do it once we've declared a certain stage and a state of emergency.
Yeah, so it has to, so it's a supplemental emergency connection, so yes, the reservoir level has to get to a certain stage, and then we can turn it on. Now, moving forward, if the town would like to use that, or be able to use that.
On a regular basis?
Yeah, with less restrictions and everything.
Bylaws.
You'd have to change the bylaws, but it is, it is more expensive to use the MWR eight water, so, just, you know, and, and if you wanna move down that road, then we'll have to have that discussion, yeah.
I told him I would ask the question, and, and so.
Uh, yeah, I think a lot of people wonder that, yeah.
Yeah.
Could we also put out some, some, like, a public service announcement, basically, letting people know what our water levels are at, and asking people to try to conserve water and limit outdoor watering whenever they can, because I think if people understand that, and, you know, people may be like, oh, yeah, okay, maybe some people will still water their lawns. But hopefully, some people would take that under consideration and cut back a little bit, and maybe, I, I'm, I'm just saying, it, it doesn't hurt to put that information out there to let people know, because if we do get to stage two.
Yep.
And we do have to enact something, then it's not a surprise to people that we're doing that.
I know in the past, we've very closely monitored that, especially when we've had really dry summers. So I think this five-week, six-week stretch of no rain has caught us almost by surprise, because of how much rain we had earlier in the season. Um, so I would, I would say, again, do you guys feel comfortable, because Michael only heard this within the last forty-eight hours, we didn't have the time to amend the agenda, are we comfortable taking a vote to give Michael the approval to enact stage two if the water levels direct us because of our bylaws? I think it's because it's, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm saying, I mean, Michael just told me today, so. Yeah, well, I mean, and then if we want, when we have our first, our next meeting in October, we can revisit it. And do it, put it on our agenda to have a discussion.
Be the other option?
Uh, on the thirtieth.
Or if it hits level two.
I, I'll have to go check.
I don't think Michael can.
Actually happens, I, I'll have to, I should check, but I, I, yeah.
Because we're, we are controlling that, unless we give Michael the approval.
That's why I'm asking, if we had, didn't do that, and it hits level two, what's the, what, what happens at that point? You call an emergency meeting, or?
We, we can do, that would probably be most likely, ultimately, it becomes an operational issue, if the wells, or if the pumps start cavitating, we just shut them down. So, shut some of the pumps down, not all of them, so.
So, to make it a little cleaner? Could we post an, um, an emergency meeting on Friday and do the, um, call?
Well, what, Friday.
Do it until Monday.
Yeah.
Right, cause if we post it tomorrow at eight AM, we wouldn't be able to do it until Monday at eight AM.
So I do think this qualifies as an emergency, and I will say, over the course of the year and some of the discussions that we've collectively had, if we're worried about open meeting law violations, there are probably more examples.
I, I, I think, I think because we didn't, we didn't have this information within forty-eight hours, we're just getting it now. Now, someone, there's very possible someone will say, well, you've been seeing the water levels go down, why haven't? But I know in tracking this before, sometimes it's fine, and then all of a sudden it drops, and it's like inches.
That we give Michael permission to, uh.
Okay, yeah, can I get a second?
If it drop, if it.
I'll second that.
Okay, great, so Michael, you, all those in favor of giving Michael the approval?
Aye.
Aye, that carries four zero, um, so.
I would definitely put something out there now.
So two, two points, so, yeah, Dan, so when we had our meeting yesterday, Dan was drafting something up that we were gonna. He was gonna send it to me, he was gonna put it up. So the other thing, Joe, we didn't pay for, we didn't spend millions of dollars for the water connection. That was paid through developer money and a grant, so it was a two million dollar project, but we didn't pay a dime.
Because, because when we put that in place, to make, it was an emergency connection only, because at the time, that's what the residents of Ashland wanted, they didn't want us to just turn on the spigot from MWR.
And the point I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that's a two million dollar project, and because of the work that we did, like, we didn't have to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah.
See, see if maybe you can get it into your newsletter this, this weekend, you know, just kind of stay, I just say, you know, the more we can stay ahead of it, the better.
If he's creating a flyer or some informational piece, make sure he sends it off to, uh, WACA, so they can be posting it on cable. So people that are watching cable will see it, and as many Facebook places and the electronic signboard and all, any, you know.
Oh, yeah, it's, um, we'll, we'll do it, I'll, I'll, I know she's watching, and, but, I'll ask Beth to put something together. I'm just joking, Beth, she's kinda, she's kinda drowning, she's doing, doing double duty right now.
Yep.
But we might be close to.
Finding somebody, okay, good, anything else from you?
No, that's it.
Okay, board reports, Claudia?
Um, yeah, I don't have too much to report, and then I can think about, um, Michael touched upon the Warren Barn. Um, we did have a school building committee meeting last night, um, updating us on, in terms of the project, and the steps that have been taken for the mold mitigation, and there's some discussion about the coyote. Um, one of the things that, you know, has been significant to me is that, um, we, the dugouts that were built don't have roofs, and that, um, I have a, asked, been asking for a couple of months, um, that that really needs to happen, that you really don't have dugouts in this day and age, that don't have roofs to protect children from balls, uh, to, from sun, rain, um, thunder and lightning, they've even been used to, to do that. Um, number that was floated last night was pretty significant number, in fact, it was, uh, about one and two-thirds times the cost of the actual savings that we, because, uh, while I quoted about a hundred and forty or a hundred and thousand dollars that we had saved during our value engineering on the project, it was really ninety-two thousand dollars that we saved from the prefab, and now they're talking about adding roofs to the tune of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, so. Um, I do ask the Orlando for your support going forward on that, I, I think that it probably can be done less expensively. I'm not really sure what the, I understand that it has to meet certain specifications and that, um, but I, and I did ask for some additional materials, um, which was something that had shown us last month, which was forwarded to me. However, it does not have any detail, the only thing that it actually looked that was different on that, was that they needed to add, uh, s-
Some footings or something.
Concrete on one end, so I'm not, really not sure, without that, what detail, what the real issue is, but, um, it's just been sort of a, you know, we're gonna have fun, we're gonna have two new fields that hopefully are gonna help with the issues in, in town. And, uh, you know, it needs to be done correctly, I don't, uh, like the idea of having to go back to the community and ask, um, for additional monies when we've built this school, um, extraordinary school, for, uh, a significant cost.
Will they, had you checked into the, uh, Labor Training Center, see if they'd be willing to, uh, use that as a project?
Uh, I have not, Joe, if you have somebody over there, then, but I, I, I kind of feel like it's really on the res- the responsibility of the committee. One question that I had last night, um, but again, it hasn't been an easy discussion to, nobody seems to.
Yeah, which I don't understand why.
Be, uh, wanna talk about it really, but, um, it, it, one of the questions I had, could we go to an outside vendor at this point and use the monies from the school building project, the paper?
Oh, we'll keep tech with that construction report, it is, I just, I'm just throwing ideas to help save money.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I, that, the first question is, can we even go to an outside vendor and use the buil- use the building project money?
I don't, I don't see why not.
I mean, right.
From the contractor himself?
Well, from, from our engineers and from our, from our project management, right, from the design and project management team. They're saying, we looked at this and this is what it's gonna.
Questions last night to the chair, but I have, I've not received any responses.
Thank you, I just, I'm trying to help out, that's all.
No, thank you, okay, anything else, Claudia?
Oh, that's good.
Okay, Joe?
Uh, thank you, um, first of all, no, thanks, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting that. Uh, first of all, I would just like to say thank you for, uh, to, to Donna Saul, for, uh, her years of service, uh, at, on the CPC, uh, board. Uh, she's leaving, uh, cause she's moving out of town and other adventures, so thank you for your service, Donna, appreciate it. Um, I was happy to represent the select board, uh, this past week, last weekend, at the Fenwall, uh, Car Show. It, there was over three hundred and fifty cars.
I was, I went down there and I said, I'm, I can't even park you. What a turnout.
It was great turnout.
It was a perfect day, so.
It was a perfect day, it was extremely hot, um, and so the lines and those that were selling water made a lot of money. And, uh, a lot of new muscle cars there, the only thing I was a little perturbed about, there was no sixty-seven GTOs. Every, everything but, anyway, long story short is, they raised twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yep.
That's totally awesome.
Yeah.
So congratulations to Peter and, and everybody that was a part of that program over there, so, great job. Um, fourth, four eighty-seven Main Street, uh, we, I thought it was going to be a presentation of the new affordable housing program going over there. Uh, what's hap-
Thanks for saving me the trip down.
Yeah, same here.
Don't come.
But what it was.
I emailed after the fact, he's like, you didn't miss anything.
Who was, uh, she is the Lip Director for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Was there to look at the property, to make sure it was a property that was well worth putting, putting the, the unit and the, the project online. Uh, she got the project, she saw the site, it was flat, everything needed to be done, so she was, she was happy with it, so she took pictures and. And then she also went up, uh, up to one hundred, uh, Chestnut Street, and we showed her some of the new properties that have been developed, you know, in, in and around, so hopefully that may have some, some pull in, a decision that needs to be made, we would expect to, I, I know.
Different organization.
You know what, another voice heard from.
Yep.
So that, that's all that, also, hopefully that, that'll last.
Mass Housing's still taking comments.
Well, yeah, well, that's, that, that helps, and, uh, lastly, Ashland Day, thank you for, uh, providing that information earlier. Uh, it's coming up this, this Saturday, um, we're looking forward to some, hopefully a nice day, I mean, yeah. Anything's better, anything's better than a tropical storm, even though, even though it fizzled out at the last minute, and I hope that that's what happens this weekend, it fizzles out. Uh, so, we're looking forward, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Let's all do our sundances for weather-like Saturday, I mean, it'll be chilly, but I think.
Cloudy mostly.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I saw.
And if it, and if it's cloudy, it may even warm up if it stays cloudy.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, but seventy's nice, you don't want eighty or ninety, like it was at the county, people were hotter than eighties.
We've had some Ashland days where it's like eighty-five, and it's hot, yeah, the field just bakes, yeah.
But thank, thank you all, and that, that's it, I'm good.
Freddie?
Uh, so, um, we talked, uh, a lot about comprehensive plan tonight. Uh, so um, we talked a a lot about comprehensive plan tonight, so um. Uh, we are meeting tomorrow night to talk about public engagement and sort of the next step in this process um, without the consultants, so hopefully, we have a really good productive conversation tomorrow night. Um, the um, thank you to everybody who came out to see the comprehensive plan at the farmer's market last weekend, I was not there, but.
They get good turnout, do you know?
I heard it wasn't quite as as high as they would have liked, but it, but um.
Yeah.
But for anyone who didn't come to the farmer's market, you get a chance to come see us at Ashland Day on Saturday, um, thanks to Joe and the Ashland Day Committee for for giving us a table. We have a brand-new banner that we're excited to to debut, um, we're gonna be under the pink tent from um, Lisa Churchill at Blush, okay, so.
So look for the pink tent, stop by.
Come and visit us, we're gonna be talking about our survey, talking about our goals, talking about all of our vision for Ashland, so come, come and chat, um. Just uh, wanted to just say thank you to um, uh, for this, I was at, Joe, myself, Michael was at the Stone Park Music Festival that happened. Two weekends ago, um, it was a really great event, so Grace did an amazing job, amazing musicians, um, and there's something really cool about having a grand piano in in the middle of the gazebo.
I know, yeah.
That is.
So.
That's pretty cool.
Pretty cool, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I do not wanna be the movers that had to put it there and level it and.
So, uh, so kudos to Grace for for a great performance, um, and then just the other thing, I know uh, the select board's been doing office hours at the farmer's market. I was talking to Yolanda and she had a really good idea about continuing office hours, possibly on days where the library is doing their book sales.
Their book sales.
So, kind of.
It's the first Saturday of every month, they have a book sale and so people are going into the library, ma- we mentioned it to Mina, the 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 director. I would, if we, if we do that and we can have a little more discussion, I would recommend we sit upstairs in the vestibule, because if we're sitting down like in the um. Cafeteria area, people don't go that way for the book sale, so something, we can put it on our um.
Yeah.
Our, we can put that on our agenda for the eighteenth and I don't think it's, I don't think it's a long discussion, I think it's just a matter of, and then committing to us being there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
But I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing for us to do, I think it's good to be able to, but we have to, but we also, you know, I, from experience, I can tell you that if we're not at a place where the people are. Nobody's gonna come to us, so we have to be where the people are.
Right. Yeah, we saw that at like bagel table.
Yeah, so.
You get a few people, but not many.
Yeah.
Unless, unless you provide cookies.
I can bring some cookies. So, um, and the only other thing is related to the cookies, so happy sixtieth birthday, Yolanda, so, um, so just birthday wishes to you.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
And that's all.
Great party.
Thank you. Appreciate that, uh, m- before I get into my update, I have one question for you, Michael, I was driving by one thirty-five to the community center the other day. What are we doing about poles where the sidewalk is going? Are we leaving them there or are we just putting?
I had the exact same thought today as I was driving back from the community center, so, and so I put in a question to our engineer, and so I I'm suspecting what they're gonna say is that they do have. You know, you do have the required clearance that you need, um.
I I'm just gonna say this, so on Elliot Street, we have sidewalks, but there's a number of spots where the telephone pole is almost. Right in the middle of the sidewalk, so I understand we did this quickly because of timing and grant and stuff like that, but.
The engineer wasn't quick?
This was actually pretty quick, but it has nothing to do with whether it was quick or not, it's just that you don't have room.
We don't have, so we, so we're not even asking them to move the poles, like that hasn't been thought about, we're just putting in the sidewalk based on the.
You don't wanna get them to move, I mean, we can't even get the wires moved.
Okay, I just, okay.
I I I I totally get it, I do, but it's one of those things where, yes, we know kind of like what the perfect project would be, right? And again, I need to, you know, I'm I'm, I'm probably going to get. The answer that yes, it meets the clearance requirements, cause I had some of this concerned with downtown too, but um. Yeah, I mean, that that, that could be. Years and a lot more money in terms of.
No, I I understand that, I just, I'm just asking the question, are we gonna just see the sidewalks around the poles, that's all.
Could very, we could very well, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
What, why, um, would you, you mind explaining, I think you explained to me at one point that the sidewalk on that side um, of the street is because there's less um. It it, less expensive because it doesn't, the, of the way the land is shaped in terms of drop-off on the other side?
No, if I remember correctly, it's because of where the gas line is, so you know, when you're putting in curb, like.
You told, you told me the drop-off, but.
Okay, it could, it could very well be.
Combination of the both.
Yeah, maybe it's both, but gas line is would be, is, cause I get in that question a lot, people don't seem to believe me when I say the drop-off.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I, when, you know, when you're doing a curb, a lot of people, you know, they just see like what's exposed, I mean, you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You dig pretty deep, you encase it in concrete, um, you know, you're doing, you're doing a good bit of excavation.
Well, and on the other side, we would have dealt with the the stone wall at the Valentine property, right, that would have been.
Yeah, we had a few, yeah, a few different obstacles there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we do have to, I, you know, we do have to kind of put our faith in the engineers who've evaluated, you know, both options, right?
Right.
And um, but that being said, I mean, engineers need direction too, cause sometimes they'll just. You know, sometimes they don't necessarily have, they think in engineering terms, they don't necessarily think in community terms, so.
Right. Okay, and then just a couple of updates, so uh, Ashland Day, as we've talked about, looking forward to being there. Um, on behalf of the board, I will be presenting our citations for Citizen of the Year and Grand Marshall, so looking forward to that. Uh, we'll be there for the comprehensive plan, plus as around the clock, we're gonna be trying to broadcast live and then roaming and doing some fun stuff. On uh, Thursday, so uh, September twenty-sixth via Zoom is the Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting from eight to nine thirty, it's our first meeting of the season. We'll be looking at our projects as well as doing some community share, I'll then be attending, and if you're interested and available, the Wemo event happening from eight thirty to twelve thirty on Friday, September twenty-seventh. In person up at Devon's, uh, should be a good discussion, some of our dealing with difficult people and things like that is some of the discussion. We're bringing in a con- consultant to sort of help us talk through some of that. So if you're available, and then on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, over at Hopkinton Center for the Arts, it's their Spotlight Event, they're bringing in Mark Cohen, he does the song Walking on Memphis. So if you're interested, it's their fun, it's their big fundraiser, so the price, the tickets are a little bit more, but uh, it includes some drinks, some food, some stuff like that, so. If you're interested, if you like Mark Cohen, or if you know people who do, please share, share that information and uh. Then our next meeting will be Wednesday, October eighteen?
No, it's September thirty.
September, oh.
That's right.
That's a, that's only a Zoom meeting, so on Monday, September thirtieth, there will be a Zoom meeting, um, that I'm gonna need you to manage, so.
Okay. Do we know what time that's going to?
Do we have a time yet for the September thirtieth Zoom meeting?
Uh, no, not that, Susan, do we have a time yet, is she there?
We'll, we'll, we'll need to post Zoom.
We do not have a time yet.
I'm kidding.
What time, Susan?
We don't have a time yet, we're waiting, find when we're gonna have the documents.
Okay, great, okay, and I think that's a wrap, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all for being here, enjoy the rest of September and we'll see you hopefully at Ashland Day and at our big meeting in, first meeting in October. Big meeting, thank you all, have a great night.